I believe our meeting is now live on YouTube. Please go ahead, Chair McPherson.
I'd like to call the meeting of the, sorry, the committee of the whole meeting of September 8th, 2020 to order. Evening, everyone. My name is Paul McPherson, counselor and chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. We are meeting electronically through Zoom. And this is our fourth committee of the whole meeting during this declared emergency period. Members of the public may observe the proceedings by accessing the live webcast at our YouTube channel. I'll do a roll call. I will ask deputy clerk to complete a roll call of council so that we can confirm quorum. Trish, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Mayor Easton.
Uh, I'm here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. Counselor Injima.
I'm here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
Counselor Bernay.
Here.
Counselor Pachariva.
Present.
Counselor McPherson.
Here.
Counselor Mikulak.
Here.
Counselor Timmers.
Here.
Counselor Reimer.
Here.
And we have quorums. Everyone is present.
In addition, I want to take a moment to welcome the staff we have joining us tonight. Electronically, Chief Administrative Officer Mike Kirkopolis, our Finance Treasurer Terry Tualla, Director of Planning and Development Kathleen Dale, our Associate Director of Planning and Development, Matt Bruder, Director of Community Services Shannon McKay, our Fire Chief Greg Hudson, Economic Development Officer Paul Deany, Director of Public Works Dave Graham, our Policy and Development Planning Supervisor Monica Cochiara, our Manager of IT Services John Brown, our Coordinator of IT Services Wesley Adair, and moderating and clerking in the meeting tonight, we have our Deputy Clerk Trish Sarnicki. As this is a virtual meeting, I will ask that we follow some procedures during the electronic meeting. Should there be a connection or service disruption for the chair or if quorum is lost, the chair and/or clerk will call a 10-minute recess to reconnect and to regain quorum. If quorum is lost, the meeting will be adjourned. If connection is lost from the chair, the clerk will ask those in attendance to wait up to 10 minutes to provide the chair time to reconnect and resume the meeting. Otherwise, after that timeframe, the vice chair will resume the meeting until the chair has reconnected and resumes their role. Each member of council who wishes to speak, please press the raise hand feature on your video call and the clerk will track our speakers list tonight and then invite you to speak when I open it for comments or questions. Also, when I finish reading a motion and announcing the mover, the clerk will then call out the vote by reading each member of council's name out loud. Please remember to take yourselves off mute during this portion of the meeting so that you can confirm if you support or oppose. Also, when not speaking, please remember to put yourselves on mute. Uh, we are now at declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest this evening? None?
We have none, Chair McPherson.
None, very good. Uh, we move to confirmation of the agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? Seeing that, move through to statutory public meetings. We have no statutory public meetings this evening. Although there are no statutory public meetings occurring for this evening's committee of the whole meeting, staff have established procedures for the public to participate at future meetings. Information is available on our town website and any future notices of public meetings will also provide direction on how the public can participate. Move now to the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda 6.1 and 6.2 delegations. We are now at the delegations portion of the Planning and Economic Committee meeting agenda. Please note that each delegation may speak for a maximum of five minutes. We have two registered delegations this evening. Our first delegation is Greg Bender on behalf of WSP Group, speaking to item 6.4, Report PD-19-20, Regulations for Cannabis Cultivation and Production, Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Mr. Bender, if you are there, please go ahead.
I'm just going to share my screen with Mr. Bender's presentation.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone. And I will commence as soon as I see the shared screen. Perfect. Great. Well, thank you very much, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here today. I understand I've got five minutes, so I'm going to go through this quite quickly. If you could advance the next slide, please. So the purpose of the meeting, I will get into, but the idea is that I'm just going to go through the summary of the process, talk about the input that's been provided through various public and stakeholder engagement sessions that we had, and talk about the summary of changes and recommendations that we're going to be discussing in a bit more detail. Next slide, please. Uh, so what we're going to do tonight is talk a bit about the final draft official plan and zoning bylaw amendment before you this evening, talk about the input provided, provide an opportunity for additional input as well, and talk a bit about the additional solutions with respect to cultivation and production of cannabis in the town. Next slide, please. So let's talk a bit about the summary of the process. We've been going through this for quite some time. I don't think any of this is going to be a bit of a surprise to all of you, but to talk very quickly about it, that there's interim control bylaw that was passed in January 2019, which temporarily prohibited production of cannabis in the town. At the same time, the town was undertaking a zoning bylaw review to talk about a whole bunch of issues related to zoning in the town. Through one of the public information centers that we had on June 26th, cannabis came up quite a bit. So it was decided at that time that we would talk, take this into account as part of our review and perhaps separate that to and accelerate because of the interim control bylaw that was passed. So through the regulations that were prepared, which included an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment, we had a stakeholder meeting in two open houses in October of 2019, where we got a significant amount of feedback on the proposed cannabis regulations that we were there to talk about. Along with that, it was recognized that some time was running out on the interim control bylaw and that there was a statutory public meeting held in November of 2019 to obtain feedback on the cannabis regulations and also extended the interim control bylaw to October 11th, 2020. So certainly that deadline is coming up. Next slide, please. So just to talk a bit about the summary of the input that was provided or the issues that were discussed at the public and stakeholder engagement session. So on October 22nd and 2030, 2019, the majority of the input and the concerns that were identified at that meeting and those sessions was related to odor and air quality, talking about, you know, that impacts people's ability to use their property, there's significant discomfort along with the odor. There's unknown impacts to health and there's negative impact on the housing market. Certainly, there's been discussions about designated greenhouse growers versus commercial growers, where it was, we talked a bit about designated growers having sort of less onerous regulations to follow and they're very difficult to regulate. Commercial growing operations have to meet federal regulations and certainly aim to comply with municipal regulations, which is what we've been aiming to address through this. Certainly, some of the issues were the retrofitting of existing facilities that which were not designed to remove odor resulting from the cannabis production, which for the most part, what we found is many of the issues have been identified through the process. Next slide, please. The rear shoes identified related to timing and that there are many growers that predate the cannabis legislation. Minimum setbacks, it was identified that will not completely resolve odor. Certainly odor does not respect setbacks and minimum separation. So that was identified not to necessarily address the issue entirely. Somebody mentioned that, you know, there should be provincial legislation requirement on environmental assessments for cannabis production. There are people concerned about the density and having too many cannabis production facility in a certain area, wanting to prohibit location or certain areas that cannabis production facility shouldn't be located. And there are also concerns about the enforcement and that's, you know, the municipality would certainly have to be quite involved in the enforcement of these facilities. Next slide, please. So the draft cannabis provisions were presented at a public meeting November 20th and the following issues were discussed related to timing, minimum setbacks, certain regulations in terms of air filtration, site plant control for lighting odor fencing, nuisance odor bylaws, what the impact on adjacent uses may be with respect to say real estate value, what short-term rentals might be impacted or various agricultural operations. And then the enforcement as well came up again. Next slide, please. So in terms of the summary of changes and recommendations, so we've been before you to talk about the recommendations and what we wanted to do is highlight certain changes that have been made based on the input provided. One of the revisions that was made is part of the official plan amendment related to permitting outdoor growing operations. Now, the zoning bylaw did permit this previously, so we were making a change to ensure that we were conforming to the zoning bylaw. And certainly, as part of the official plan amendment, we'll get into the zoning bylaw a bit more. Odor and odor control and other tools that the municipality has certainly will be used to regulate outdoor growing. I just wanted to make that clear because they will be subject to site plant control and other bylaw provisions for odor fencing and lighting. The other recommendations here have not changed related to reducing impacts and sensitive land uses, talking about appropriate buffering. That, you know, onsite water storage would be provided. Licensing framework is still there, should the municipality wish to enable that. Waste management plans and obviously requirements for site plant control are all still there. Next slide, please. So some of the revisions, the zoning bylaw again relates to permitting outdoor uses, deleting, so again deleting that provision, again, they will still be required to conform to any site plant control bylaw or other bylaws that the municipality would have. Adding in a minimum setback of 300 meters, which was previously 150 from residential institutional open space zones, requiring a minimum lot area of eight hectares instead of six and requiring that existing structures not to be converted or retrofitted to allow for a cannabis production facility on that particular property. Again, the minimum setback of 30 meters still exists, minimum separation of 1,000 meters between cannabis production facilities still exists and certainly parking and outdoors storage restrictions are certainly there. Next slide, please. So in terms of the next steps, just to walk you through those, obviously considering the adoption of the OPA official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment, consider drafting a nuisance bylaw, which I understand the town is considering. Understanding that you have the ability to enable municipal licensing framework, which is, which would essentially implement the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment. It is currently in draft and being reviewed by legal staff. The framework does need to be established and that further requirements for lighting odor and other issues need to be met as part of this as well. Licensing framework does require renewal and evaluation of licenses, which is yet another sort of step for somebody to take and gives the municipality that ability to regulate that. It does address the existing operations that are not conforming, which is again the major issue that came up through the number of open houses that we had at stakeholder sessions. Slide, please. So some of the next steps are to update your property standards bylaw, again, to conform to and implement the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments that are before you this evening. Again, related to odor, lighting, noise, waste disposal, updating your site plant control bylaw, again, to implement those tools as well to ensure that, you know, again, lighting screening, landscaping access, parking are all met to the municipalities' requirements. And then in terms of timing, these tools and the implementation of the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment are dependent upon the approval of those documents. And it can be eased in versus being implemented immediately, again, just to sort of test the waters and see how the two planning documents before you are, are meeting your requirements. I think that's the last slide. So I tried to do that in five minutes. I am sure I went over it quite quickly, but that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. And put it now over to counsel. Are there any questions from counsel?
Chair McPherson, we have Counselor Timmers first.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Hi, thank you. Through you, Chair, to Mr. Bender. I just have a couple of questions around the setback, the 300 meters. And is that something that was acceptable to the shareholders? Were they, was this recommended or were they looking perhaps for a larger number for a setback? I'm just wondering how we arrived at the 300 meters.
Uh, through you to Counselor Timmers. As it relates to 300 meters, we did a best practices review for a number of municipalities across the province and it was felt that 300 meters was reasonable. Certainly, there are municipalities who have less and there are some that have more. And through discussions with staff and I think through input that we received from committee, it was felt that 300 meters was reasonable. We also tried to use, not that the minimum distance separation formula is the most applicable tool that can be used because that is primarily for livestock units and mineral storage under sort of the OMAFRA guidelines. But we did use some of that to help inform our information as well, which again typically uses often 300 meters depending on what's on an adjacent property.
Okay. And I have another question, Chair. Regarding the eight hectares, which is approximately 20 acres as a parcel size, I'm just wondering if that is large enough? I'm not sure how many parcels are available within our town. And if we make the parcel much larger, would that not, you know, kind of wouldn't open up a lot of land or a lot of options? So I'm just, same question, how we arrived at the eight hectares and why it's not larger?
Certainly. And through Chairman McPherson to Counselor Timmers. So again, based on the similar review that we did on best best practices, we found a whole range of minimum lot sizes. I know your neighbors to the east have larger lot size. We originally proposed something a bit smaller and it was identified through input from staff and committee that we probably should seek something a little bit larger, which is why we went to eight. Certainly, you know, there's probably is some effort in finding a parcel of that size to accommodate a particular use and, but in terms of what's available, I cannot speak to that necessarily.
Okay, very good. I think the reason why my questioning is, I have 25 acres and I have 18 homes that are but my farm land, all within maybe 1,000 feet, maybe a little more. I also join, my property joins a school, so I could very well have an operation on this property, yet I would be a neighbor to 18 to 20 homes and a school, yet I would still meet those setbacks and a lot requirement. So I guess that's where my, why I'm asking those questions. So, thank you.
Would you like me to respond, actually?
Sure. Sure. If you would like. It wasn't really a question. It was just really some observations I had, but absolutely.
Yeah, so the, fair enough. The 300 meters that I mentioned, the setback would actually be from the lot line, not the building. So that would not actually allow you to have a particular facility on, say, your property, if you use that as an example, because you would be abutting an institution that use and other residential uses.
Is that good?
If I, okay. But if I, if I had a distance, if I met that distance, I could. I guess that's what my question is. If I'm, if I meet the, the thousand feet from the neighbor, would that not qualify me?
Uh, it could. If you met all the setbacks in the zoning bylaw and undertook all the studies necessary, there's a possibility that would be permitted, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Counselor.
Next Counselor is Counselor Rajima.
Counselor Rajima, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. And uh, thank you, Mr. Bender, for presenting to us today. Did a good job of keeping it within five minutes. That was incredible. My question is about outdoor operations. I know that some people do have a concern about being able to grow cannabis outside. They may think of that as something that would have a greater impact than operations that are growing cannabis indoors. But then I've also heard another view on that and that would be that outdoor operations are subject to the seasons changing. Whereas indoor operations likely are year-round. So I just wonder if you could speak a bit about the impact of outdoor operations and how we got to the policies that we're proposing here.
Certainly. And through you, Counselor McPherson, to Counselor Rajima. What I've, similar questions in other municipalities have come up related to outdoor growing and my response has been the majority, the overwhelming majority of input that we received related to odor and lighting related to indoor growing, where say there was retrofitting of existing greenhouses that were just not designed for those types of uses. Certainly, as it relates to an outdoor growing operation, you know, you don't have to have centralized venting, you know, systems in place that would concentrate sort of a plume of odor, so to speak, and have to exhaust that into a neighboring property or out into the air. Certainly, outdoor growing does have to follow the growing seasons. The yields are different. You're not going to have year-round growing like you would in a greenhouse. So the perception of odor impact would be, you know, concentrated to one instance or spread out over, you know, a particular time where the, you know, the flower, plants are flowering and things of that sort. You know, the information that we researched primarily related to indoor growing, but it was felt that there are tools that the municipality has to help regulate and guide outdoor growing uses relative to say site plant control, lighting, fencing. As it relates to odor, I think it would be very difficult to regulate outdoor, you know, growing operations as it relates to odor. Certainly, I think there's probably some information that could be provided to say, depending on the yield that is being grown, to demonstrate sort of how much, how many plants are being planted and what that impact might be. But because it is all outdoor, it's still very much as an agricultural use. And I think it, certainly the municipality has some tools available to regulate. I think it's, there's only so much you can do to an outdoor growing operation.
Thank you. So through you, Mr. Chair, we're proposing to regulate that through the licensing process and site plan control. Is that right?
Sorry, you're asking me this?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. Through the chair to you.
Yes, and through the chair to you, Madam Counselor. Yes, that is true.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I do have, I do see Mr. Bruder's hand up and I would also just suggest to the, to the counsel that we do have a report coming. So if we could keep, keep the questions that we've got specific to Mr. Bender and his, you know, opinion or his professional position on things because we still have the actual report to go through. So I will go to Mr. Bruder if he has some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to dovetail off of what Mr. Bender was talking about, outdoor crops can be a little bit difficult just because they are treated as an agricultural use. They are, you know, a certain variety of crop. That said, you know, I've been talking about from day one with this whole process, the need for balance. We need to balance, you know, trying to regulate these types of operations so they minimize impacts, but at the same time, we don't want to go too far and over-regulate. So the idea is while we would, you know, permit these outdoor operations, they would still need to comply with, yes, our site plan control levers. You know, there's the other aspects of this framework, which are, you know, it's kind of a three-pronged approach. When you talk about, you know, first, we've got our land use provisions in our zoning and our official plans, but then we also get into our nuisance bylaw and our business and business licensing system that we're hoping to bring forward very shortly in draft form. And through the three of those, we're hoping to address outdoor growing as well. It is true from an odor impact standpoint, from what I've been told, you know, it's not within an enclosed building, so the odor isn't quite as pungent. It's only at certain types, times of the year rather than all year long with some of the greenhouse operations that provide those continuous growing conditions. But at the end of the day, we still want to make sure that we do include it in our regulatory framework. So I just wanted to add those comments.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bruder. Next up, Deputy Clerk.
Counselor Mikulak is next. Chair McPherson.
Counselor Mikulak, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the presenter. Long time coming. I think it's fantastic. I like what I've read. You've done a lot of work on this and I appreciate that. Just, you mentioned that you've consulted or you've looked at other municipalities. When I was reviewing the 300 meter setback, I had a hard time finding, can you give me examples of municipalities that have recently updated their zoning bylaw? I feel as though we're, we're at the forefront of this. We're at, we're taking an active approach to this, that there's not, I couldn't find a lot of information from other municipalities that have, that are at the same speed or timing as we are.
And certainly through you, Chairperson McPherson to Counselor Mikulak. We did a best practices review, as I mentioned, and they related to Grimsu, West Lincoln, Halton Hills, Holloman County, Halifax, Norfolk County, City of Edmonton, Town of Onaway and provisions that NEC has certainly studied and then looked at before. The reason why you probably can't find 300 meters is because we did our best to try and develop sort of a solution that was unique to the town of Lincoln. So you might not necessarily see 300 meters specified in other zoning bylaws, but certainly, you know, there are setbacks identified with 300 meters is probably a bit more unique to the town because we did take the input to heart and consider that quite seriously, both from stakeholders, members of the public and the committee. But we, yeah, we, there are a number of municipalities in addition to some of the ones that we looked at, including say Town of Pelham, that have gone through and done similar work.
Yeah, I appreciate that response because what I was finding was I was trying to find setbacks of 500 meters from other municipalities and I couldn't, I had a hard time. I had a difficult time trying to find those municipalities that went so far as 500. So I thought that 300 seems, 150 to 350 or so seemed to be about the number that I was seeing many municipalities. Thought being that if it's going to smell from 300 meters, it's going to smell from 3 kilometers. So if it's a, if it's a bad site. And another question I have to you is, um, with this, with this PD plan, how, how, what impact would it have with regards to the minimum distance separation formulas? Like, should we be looking at that at the same time, similar? Should we have or had we, should OMAFRA come up with a new regulation stating that, you know what, we're going to treat this similar to an industry such as pork or, you know, cattle?
And through you, Chair McPherson, to Counselor Mikulak. You may recall some of the remarks I made at the open house last, almost a year ago. And, you know, I had mentioned and certainly have no problem mentioning again that, you know, that these, these particular, you know, you had federal legislation that was passed. There was no provincial legislation passed and all municipalities are left scrambling to try and figure out what this means for them, you know, themselves and trying to regulate this themselves because there's not a lot of guidance. And, you know, so one of the things that I've mentioned, either in public forum or as part of any committee meeting, is that in a, in a perfect situation, which we all kind of, we don't live in a perfect world, but a perfect situation would be that the province would pass legislation that would help municipalities or help guide these particular facilities and then allow municipalities to implement that direction. So one of the things that the, that the province did many, many years ago was pass, you know, the minimum distance separation or prepare the minimum distance separation formula, which guides livestock units and newer storage. But that's all it guides. So you can't necessarily appropriate that and then apply it to, say, cannabis because it's completely different. But we did use that as a bit of a guide to help us think about this. So if we were the province, what would they think about? And how would they regulate this, you know, type of use? And so we used some of that to help guide the recommendations that are before you this evening. So for instance, what are the setbacks, right? Because setbacks are are typically what, you know, minimum distance separation formula results in. What are the setbacks from, say, manure stores to a sensitive receptor or land use? So what we did is we looked at, you know, what are some of the impacts from from cannabis production facilities? And how might they sort of travel and impact neighboring land uses? So what we did is we came up with, that's why, one of the reasons why we recommended 300. Because that's often. Used in the minimum distance separation calculations.
Okay, appreciate that. Through you, Mr. Chair. I I just asked that question because. Prior to that minimum distance separation formula. That those industries were in a similar position that we find ourselves in right now. So that's, that's why I posed that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Mikulak. And next, Deputy Clerk.
We have Counselor Reimer.
Counselor Reimer, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Person. Thank you, Mr. Bender, for your presentation. Tonight, two questions along the same lines as you've already talked about in your. Research of the other municipalities of their bylaws. The distance between cannabis facilities, we have ours in our draft bylaw now at a kilometer, 1,000 meters, I think.
That's right.
How did that relate to what was in in those municipalities? Is that similar or more or less?
And through you, Chairperson McPherson to Counselor Reimer. Similar to what I've mentioned, we tried to figure out what would be best for Lincoln. There are some municipalities that have, you know, separation distance of of a couple hundred meters. To some that are. So significant that, you know, you're after a couple of the setbacks provided, you're not, you're probably covering the whole municipality. So we we tried to work, you know, based on the input provided, based on the work and good work that we did with with staff. We landed on on 1,000 meters. It was, you know, to to say that odor is not going, is going to be contained within, you know, within that area is is obviously not true. But it it is a sort of a best practice to say that, well, at least. It might be dispersed enough that you're going to smell it less if you have a separation of a kilometer than if you had every 500 meters, for example.
And just to follow up on that, does that include existing facilities? So if we had existing facilities in Lincoln. This gets enacted, do we take a kilometer radius around existing ones? And and that takes those properties out of commission, so to speak.
And through you, Chairman Person to Counselor Reimer, the intent is that once the municipality has their licensing framework in place. Licenses are going to be required for all facilities and then through that licensing framework, it would establish a radius around those licenses. So yes, the answer is yes.
Existing, okay. And one other question, if I may, Chairman Person. Is there anything in the reports or any anything else in the bylaw of the of the municipalities? That keeps somebody from combining properties to achieve minimum size? Like the minimum of eight hectares? Is something in there that says they cannot do that?
And through your Chairman Person to Counselor Reimer, if somebody were to to say do a lot addition or to add properties together to to reach a certain lot size. There's nothing prohibiting that from happening. However, there still is a host of other requirements that that that. Proponent would have to meet related to not only minimum lot size but other setbacks, frontage. Obviously, there's, you know, they'd have to go through planning application process. Again, we'd subject to site plan control. There are a number of tools available that the municipality has to. Impose restrictions on that particular property. So it's not just law area that is that would be, you know, the the trigger in that place. There is a number of other. Zone requirements and other tools that the municipality has to help.
But if those all boxes got checkmarked, they could combine.
Yep, they they could.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bender. Thank you, Chairman Person.
Thanks.
Next, I believe we have Mary Easton, do we not? Thank you, Mary Easton. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bender, I, I guess I'm of a mind that. Because the rules and regulations at the provincial level are pretty dishwater. That it's probably a good idea for us to bear down on this until somebody says uncle. I don't think it's going to be us that's going to say uncle. So I'm looking for allowable practices at the highest standard. And I'm just wondering how we test. The 300 meter setback a little bit more empirically. So if we looked at the map of the town of Lincoln and we looked at the average size of farms in Lincoln. I don't know, maybe you did this. If you did, then wonderful. Can you tell, can you tell us how many properties? Would theoretically be involved in being able to grow a crop? Do we know if it's 100 farms or 200 farms? What do we know about that? Because it seems to me that that number in itself would want to direct counsel in terms of. How much activity we really want. Do you have a sense of this?
Through you, Chairman Person to Madam Mayor. I may defer some of this to staff, but I do recall having this conversation at the staff level. Based on the zone requirements that have been identified and are before you this evening. I I don't, I don't want to mischaracterize this, but if I recall. It, upon applying the setbacks in lot areas, there would be. My best character is characterization would be there are minimal opportunities below the bench to accommodate cannabis production facilities.
And what about above the bench?
That I I don't recall.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, let's reserve that question then to ask of the staff because. I think this is a test of how rigorous. This all is. I mean, you have to keep in mind, Mr. Bender. I do, I am interested in this as a, it is an agricultural operation. I'm certainly interested in the economic benefit. But I certainly don't feel obliged to leave any loopholes here. Particularly with what we've suffered over the last year. There's no goodwill. No goodwill here with the people who are growers. They're only interested in the money. So we have to be very, very careful as I'm sure you you understand. So, okay, that's, that's, that's good. Did you talk at all about, this may be strictly a. A staff question, but what do you know about the analysis of and case studies around the license renewal? Did you get any exposure to that? When you were talking to people?
Through you, Chairman Person to Madam Mayor. We we provided a bit of a framework for the licensing to be established, but that is that has primarily been dealt with at the staff level.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, and. So I just want to understand a little bit more about the minimum distance separation. And the sector standards. So. It's probably the only thing that's out there. Am I correct in saying that, that there isn't another measurement? That we can even turn to to look for some potential solutions here? Or to be able to measure the efficacy of any decision that we make?
Through you, Chairman Person to Madam Mayor. So at the provincial side, there's there's really nothing that's available for municipalities to use as a tool. You know, to to help regulate. Cannabis production facilities other than tools identified through the municipal act or the planning act. So municipal act, you've got the municipal licensing framework, which has to be in your zoning bylaw. And then through the planning act, you've got official plan zoning bylaw. I'm probably going to miss this up, but property standards. And then other bylaws to help again enforce zoning so that whether that be parking or whether that be. Lighting, noise, things of that sort. But in terms of testing this, it's all. Certainly, last year it was it was quite new, but it's still. Municipalities are still moving quite slowly to try and enact. You know, regulations to guide these facilities because there's there's little guidance at the provincial level.
Okay, so caution is a watchword here and we shouldn't be. Afraid to use that at this point in time because once the die is set. We're not going to be able to. Enhance those standards very easily. Is that a fair assumption?
And through your Chairman Person to Madam Mayor, certainly as any planning document, you have the ability to to evolve it, to refine it as time goes on. If you were, I'm just going to make something up. If you were to enact. A setback of 50 meters and found out that it just wasn't going to work, then you could certainly increase that. But then those facilities that would be. Would have been allowed under that setback would be able to continue. So but you certainly can amend your planning documents and other bylaws as you see fit as a municipality.
Right. Okay, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I don't know, Greg, whether this comes under your jurisdiction or not. If I were going to ask you, would I ask you to develop an algorithm? To test the pathway. Of a dozen different scenarios that we've had to deal with in the last 18 months. Are you the correct person to create that algorithm so that we could identify the gaps based on real experience? Or would the staff do that?
Making me blush. Through you, Counselor McPherson to Madam Mayor, I actually, I'm not sure. If it's if it's land use planning issues that have been. Evaluated over a certain period of time, certainly we. Certainly, we could look at some of the gaps and identify solutions. That's, that's. Well, we attempted to to work with staff to develop solutions to. Certain issues as it relates to, again, official plan policies and zoning bylaw regulations to help guide these uses. If it's something more mechanical than I'm not aware of, then I honestly am not sure.
Okay, well, I think that's maybe a way that we're going to have to work our way through this, Mr. Chairman. Because it doesn't, and if we don't do it, I don't know who will because. It seems that some of the mechanics are just that, they're technical solutions. But I I think we've all found out how creative. You know, the people are that are that are working in this industry. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Greg, very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do not see any other hands up, so I also want to thank Greg. For all of the work that you and your your firm has done on this very. Critical issue for us here in in Lincoln and especially when you think about the timing of. What's going on both in Lincoln and around the world as far as COVID is concerned. I want to thank you for. Bringing this back in a timely fashion for us to to get the conversation moved forward. So thanks, Greg, for everything.
You're most welcome. Thank you.
So I'm going to move on to our second delegation is Sheri Wang on behalf of the Holland Group, speaking on item 6.4, Report PD-19-20. Regulations for Cannabis Cultivation and Production Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Ms. Wang, please go ahead if you are there. Do you know if she's on, Trish?
Chair McPherson, she is connected. I've permitted her from the waiting room, so she should be there. I've asked her to unmute as well.
Hello.
Hello, Sheri.
Yeah. Hi, I was cut off for a while. I will just reconnect it.
Okay, you're you're on and we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you.
The floor is yours.
All right.
We're not hearing anything.
Oh, you want me to say something?
Yes, you have, you've asked for a delegation. You have five minutes. So this is your opportunity to speak to the council.
Oh, sorry. So far, I don't have anything to say so far. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Then we will move on. Is that fair? Deputy Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So. This concludes the delegations portion of the agenda. I have a motion moved by Mayor Easton that council receive and file as information the following delegations regarding Report PD-19. Dash 20 Regulations for Cannabis Cultivation and Production. Office Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Does that sound right? Deputy Clerk? Production Office Plan Amendment?
Production Official Plan Amendment.
Official Plan Amendment, thank you. This is from Greg Bender from WSB Group and Sheri Wang from the Holland Garden. I now will ask Clerk, Deputy Clerk. Sir Nikki, to call up the vote. Go ahead, Trish.
Please, and thank you, Chair McPherson. Please unmute your mics. Counselor Brene.
Yes.
Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Mikulak?
Yes.
Counselor Pachariva?
Yes.
Counselor Reimer?
Yes.
Counselor Regina?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Timmers?
Yes.
Mayor Easton?
Support.
Thank you, and that motion is carried.
We are now considering the consent agenda, which includes PD-20-20 Building Permit Activity Report for Second Quarter, April. To June 2020. Would any member like to remove this item from the consent agenda to discuss? See, nobody? No, okay. Be no further, pardon me. I have a motion moved by Counselor Mikulak to receive and file Building Permit Activity Report PD-20-20. For Second Quarter, April to June 2020 as information. I will now ask our Deputy Clerk to call up the vote. First, go ahead.
Okay, Chair McPherson. Counselor Brene?
Yes.
Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Mikulak?
Yes.
Counselor Pachariva?
Yes.
Counselor Reimer?
Yes.
Counselor Regina?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Timmers?
Yes.
Mayor Easton?
Support.
Thank you, and that motion is carried.
Thank you, and we will now consider item 6.4, Report PD-19-20 Regulations for Cannabis Cultivation. And Production Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Do members of council have any questions or comments? Counselor Pachariva?
Thanks, Chairman Person. Through you to staff. I got a couple of questions. How do we ensure that? After we establish. All of our. Draft provisions. To the to the bylaw that that these aren't appealed at committee of adjustment? So how do we say that these are placed in stone and we will not? We will not consider them?
True to Mr. Bruder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whenever we pass zoning bylaw amendments, there is a time period where. You can't request any any amendments to them. However, moving forward. It's one of those things, you know, I always say with our zoning bylaws, as it is now, it is a little bit antiquated in general. So we have had quite a few amendments come through, but I mean, I think that's. Bestowed upon staff when organizations come forward and they request changes, we look at, you know, the intent of the bylaws. We look at the location specific to where they're being requested and we determine whether or not there's merit. To go forward with them, these being newer provisions, they are directly in line with what our current intent is. So I would say that we would be quite skeptical. In allowing any amendments to the zoning or official plan.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear. And and a follow up, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, yes.
One of the, one of the points raised by Mr. Fraser in his letter and Hugh has been doing. Minimum distance separations, I think, since they were invented. So he's had a lot of. minimum distance separations, I think, since they were invented. So he's had a lot of, a lot of extra, a lot of experience in doing it. Counselor Timmers touched on it, and Mayor Easton touched on it, too. Sure, the 300 meters is great. If you're up on the escarpment, maybe around Spring Creek Road and Mountain Street, where there's not a lot of people. But should that MDS not increase as you get closer? So again, it's that, how many of these parcels does it actually affect that buffer? And you know, and I'm going back to the incidents we had, you know, with Flyville. And, you know, these were either within the urban boundary or awful darn close. They met the minimum distance separation, but there was still a nuisance issue. So just, just want to drill down a little bit more on that if I could.
Mr. Bruder?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, definitely a good point, but I like to bring attention to it again, that it's not necessarily the setbacks that are going to be the be all and end all with addressing odor mitigation. I mean, I think we've heard from residents throughout this process, they could sometimes smell the odors from kilometers away. And, you know, by using a setback to address that specifically, it is always going to be challenging. As Mr. Bender said, we did try to keep to the upper range of the setbacks that we saw through our view of standard practices. But going forward, it's not just these provisions that are going to work to address odor. That's why we proposed that draft nuisance bylaw we had before you. And that is why we are looking to implement a business licensing framework. That's also why we've done things. We've made some tweaks. You know, we heard a lot through the consultation period, you know, retrofitting of existing buildings. They're not really designed to be a, you know, a vacuum sealed envelope that doesn't allow any odor to escape. So, you know, requiring purpose built facilities while probably, you know, a touch more restrictive than maybe a couple of other municipalities. At the same time, it really helps to drill down on that specific issue as well. So like I say, it's kind of a multifaceted approach, but I always try to caution I wouldn't get completely held up on the setbacks when we're talking about odor.
Okay, and I appreciate that. It's a multifaceted approach here of the, of the, of the MDS, the licensing and the nuisance bylaw, that all together, we hope, or we have great confidence that it will help solve this issue, correct?
That is correct, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Bruder.
All good? We move now to Counselor Mikulak, I believe.
Counselor, very, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Through you to staff, in reviewing this, the bylaw amendment, was there any consideration to requiring, like, there's a, there's a section here requiring reasonable measures to prevent the escape of odors and pollen from indoor areas. Was there any consideration to forcing or to putting it in our bylaw to expect carbon filters with any construction of these sort of facilities or renovations or, you know, renovations to existing facilities, typical greenhouse that are proposed to convert to possible cannabis?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, definitely. We looked at that as potential wording we could include. I've said before, we kind of needed to maintain a balance between not being, you know, being as restrictive as possible to protect adjacent land uses, but at the same time, not being over prohibitive. And in this case, just realizing that not all these cannabis facilities are quite the same and prescribing maybe a specific type of air filtration system might not necessarily be a fit all solution. So we just wanted to include wording in there. Yes, there is a little bit of flexibility, but at the same time, it is still stated in our regulations that we do need it, and it needs to be to our satisfaction, you know, if we keep getting complaints by virtue of what we're bringing forward here and what we're looking to bring forward with some of the other bylaws. Collectively, we want to have the ability to address that and have those levers in place.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruder. So through you, Mr. Chair, would it be possible to add that somewhere in this amendment where if it's within a certain area, zone within Lincoln, that there's an expectation to have carbon filters or, you know, manufactured odor mitigation? As opposed to just, I don't know what reasonable measures would be. What would, what would a typical reasonable measure be with regards to preventing the escape of odors?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Well, I mean, reasonable means could mean a variety of things. I think it just means that there needs to be measures in place that bring that particular operation in conformity with our bylaws, including the ones we're bringing forward. In some cases, you're exactly right. In many cases, it could be exactly that, carbon filtration system. There's air scrubbers, there's purifiers, there's mist sprays, a whole slew of potential means to address odor impacts. But instead of limiting that, we want to have the ability or to at least, you know, address those by any means that might be most appropriate to the property. But the goal is to have that bylaw framework in place that, you know, if we continue to receive complaints, we still have a means to act on them and indicate, no, this isn't to the satisfaction of the town. And there needs to be an opportunity to further address impacts.
Okay. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, one more. So how does this bylaw, how does this bylaw affect existing greenhouse operations that are possibly sold? Do, does the license carry over with the property? Does it remain status quo? Is it grandfathered? Or if there is a change in ownership, does that, does that affect the eligibility to, to be exempt of the proposed bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Are you asking for, for an operation that's already established cannabis operation, and then it gets sold to another entity?
Well, I take, for example, the Hexo building on the South Service Road. It appears as though it's been recent, there's a new sign that, there's a new name on that sign. I'm not sure what the status is. But would they have to conform to a new bylaw should we pass this? If there's a change in ownership?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair. Based on Health Canada, you know, licensing frameworks, the licenses aren't transferable. So you can't just walk in, you know, a new owner walk into an existing facility and think that the same license that applied there will apply to them as well. They'd have to go through, they'd have to get a license as well to operate. So right off the get go there, there'd be a little bit of a process for them at the Health Canada front. For us, any facility that, I'm just going to talk generally about existing facilities for a second. You can't retroactively apply zoning to something that's already there. So that's why, you know, like I've said a couple of times already, we're coming forward with a couple of different avenues here for enforcement through our nuisance bylaw, and more importantly, through business licensing, because you can apply business licensing to existing facilities.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And we now move to Mayor Easton, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I've consolidated the questions, Mr. Chairman, that I was asking Mr. Bender. Through you to Mr. Bruder. I'm very interested, Matt, in this algorithm testing. I guess what I'm really getting to is that I want council to have identified for them proactively where the gaps are in our system and what the root causes are. Because I'm fearful that if we don't even know what the problems are going to be going forward, that this is really going to be quite a difficult exercise for everyone concerned. And to say nothing of the costs that are going, we're going to be confronted with for bylaw. And so I don't know what your plans are, or whether you feel that it's available in the document. If it is, then, you know, maybe I can meet with you and you can point them out to me. But this is, I think, a perfect opportunity for us to identify the issues before we continue on any further.
Mr. Bruder?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Your worship, are you, are you asking about what I foresee some of the loopholes might be in what we're proposing?
Yes, I'm suggesting that when you look at different scenarios, and there's several different scenarios for licensing, if we started to examine the processing of those licensing and the following up of those licenses for renewal, where would the gaps be? Where would the problems be? From all the discussions you've had with people, can you identify those for us now? Not today, but as we go along here?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Your worship, just a couple of comments on that, if I may. I think some of the potential for, I don't know if necessarily loophole's the right word, maybe some challenges are obviously with respect to some of the medicinal grows especially, just because their manner in which they are licensed and the regulatory frameworks that are tied with them are very different from, you know, actual licensed producer like your Hexo or something like that. So it is, it's going to be a little bit of a, of a process for sure, because, like I said, they have a little bit of a different legislation applied to them. And also some, you know, history that I've touched on earlier in other meetings about this with respect to some of the Superior Supreme Court decisions and all those things. So those are the facilities where I could see, you know, more proactive monitoring by our bylaw team in the future and things like that is really going to come in handy, because those are the ones that we've been seeing a little bit more challenged with to date. That's my main viewpoint as to, you know, what challenges could confront us as we move forward with this framework.
Okay, so that's, that's really good to identify, because it's not so clear in the document as some, as some of the other issues are. And so this would mean that, just as a scenario, if I had, if my neighbor were growing it in my backyard and we're in condominiums and we're, we have, you know, entrances out into our yard, and people on both sides of me are growing, are there rules and regulations for them to control odors? Do they have to filter?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, if we're talking about, you know, those, those growers that are just for personal use, like the maximum for plants, that's a little bit more difficult, really hard to apply any, any kind of licensing framework, because it's not for profit or it's not supposed to be anyway. And there are very small operations just for personal use. So I, I think we would definitely have issue expanding our framework into that, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, but could we have fines, significant fines?
Well, one, sorry, Mr. Chair, through you, we would have a potential avenue forward on that through our nuisance bylaw, potentially, because it could have, it just applies to odor generally from cannabis. So I think there could be an avenue there. But that is something I can follow up with you on as we get a little further into our finalization of our nuisance bylaw.
Okay. Now, Mr. Bruder, I don't mean to beat you up, but that was only one gap. I hope you're right. Is anything else coming to your mind? I mean, people have been breaking the law all over the place. It just doesn't seem like quite adequate in terms of the, of the, well, I think we should use loopholes, because that's exactly what's happening. How can we address these?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think, you know, what's important, too, is a direct communication route with, with the regional police. We've been doing that already on certain properties. There has been dialogue back and forth. I mean, when, when we talk about breaking the law, they definitely need to be involved. And they'll, you know, as we continue with a little more proactivity in our monitoring of the, of the operations that we know of, and any we hear about through complaints from our bylaw team, we'll definitely be looping them in as well as, you know, it can be a multi-agency endeavor to address some of these issues. So I think it's just, we have to maintain a very high level of communication with those impacted agencies. But otherwise, you know, when I talk about the regulatory framework, I think, quite frankly, we've done it, we've done a good job when it comes to looking at not just new facilities coming into the town, but what are we going to do about the ones that are already here? I think a lot of consideration has gone into that, because we've heard, you know, a fair amount of concerns from, from our residents on it. So, you know, it really has been a focus for us to look at it from a kind of a multi-pronged approach, which we're looking to implement.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just lastly, I can't think of another matter from a staffing perspective that will need to come up during the budget discussions than the additional staff that we're going to have to require. And notwithstanding that, even a change in our complaint driven process in order to be proactive, I think the, all of these things will definitely have to be tabled for the 2021 budget. And, and I don't know, through you possibly to Mr. Krikopoulos, Mr. Chairman, whether or not that the size of that staff increase should have a bearing on whether or not we approve this. Maybe we could have some clarification there as well. Thank you.
Sir, is that through to Mr. Krikopoulos?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor's question. And if I could just maybe briefly pick up on Mr. Bruder's comments in terms of gaps, and I think what council's doing, and this will play into my question or my answer to your question. Looking at OP and zoning regulations, licensing, and then as a subset of licensing, how we're going to address odors, I think are gaps right now. But those gaps will be addressed when we bring forward the report you see in front of you. And then the business licensing element to it. And so I think, you know, I think what the mayor is suggesting or highlighting with the algorithm question is that if we were to run, you know, all properties in the town through this new bylaw, would there be any cracks? And so I think we've tried to do that as much as possible to look at the various scenarios. My advice to council is that, notwithstanding any look at the staff complement and the amount of work that Mr. Bruder and his team may face moving forward, that it's important to move forward with this report and this zoning bylaw amendment and official plan amendment, because I think it gives us the tools necessary. And as I said, you'll be seeing at the next committee meeting, a report that looks at licensing and odor being a subset of what we're going to try to address through licensing. So we've had the nuisance bylaw in its form come forward for council comments at the last meeting. Today, you're seeing this zoning and official plan amendment, and at the next meeting, you're going to see licensing. So all of those kind of working together, working hand in hand. But you're right, I think our job and our goal and our advice to council, once we look at this being implemented and what it means from a staffing perspective, will be to update council on what does workflow look like, what does enforcement look like? And when we get a new manager of bylaw and have a full complement, we'll have a better idea of that. But my, my advice to council is, should you wish, you should be supporting this this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Deputy Clerk, who do we have next? I believe it's Counselor Reimer.
That's correct, Chair McPherson.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Through you, I believe, to Mr. Bruder. In the report, Matt, under financial legal staff considerations, just for clarification, because I think you answered this at a previous meeting. The licensing framework is intended to cover all staffing costs. And in the staffing part of that report, it just talks about, you know, bylaw staffing resources will, will need to be, you know, strengthened. Does, is it, is it safe to say that all the licensing for our cannabis business licensing going forward will cover the bylaw part? You know, like, like additional staffing and it's for the hours that they would spend on that. Is that what it's meant to cover? Or clarification on that, if you could?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that is the intent. I mean, it's looking at cost recovery. So yes, that's, that would be what we're looking at, for sure.
So just to clarify, if we have to hire, you know, whatever's part time, full time staff to administer all this stuff, we, all this stuff, all the, all the bylaw and the zoning updating, we can cover our costs through our licensing?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we can, we can look at our fee and the charge for that and make sure we incorporate the costs associated with implementation of it, yes.
And one more question, if I may, Chair McPherson, to Mr. Bruder as well. Just a, and I did talk to you on the phone last week about this, Matt, just the, and again, it's, we've talked about it a lot. Setbacks and minimum sizes. It's unfortunate that this, that the cannabis industry has not, has not endeared itself to anybody, to the residents of the town of Lincoln so far. It doesn't have a great track record and It doesn't have a great track record and you indicated all the odor mitigation options. I haven't seen any of those that work yet in the town of Lincoln anyways, and I don't have a lot of confidence in them. And I'll come back to the, uh, to the comment that Mr. Bender, uh, answered to, uh, one of Mayor Easton's questions about minimal opportunities below the bench and, and some above, I believe were, were his words. I'm just concerned, uh, they do not need, the cannabis industry does not need a lot of acres to make money. So we've seen tougher growth, how small that is, they make lots of money off that. Uh, we've seen some of the other operations, they do not need a lot of area. So 20 acres sounds big and a kilometer between cannabis facilities sounds like a lot. But that, that, that worries me a lot. Uh, I would follow along Mary's comments about it being agriculture and, and employing local people and, uh, the business side of it. But, uh, there is, there's not too many pluses, uh, in the plus, there's no check marks in the plus column of cannabis industry so far. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty worried about the sheer number of these that are going to pop up. Just wonder if you comment. I guess specific to the, to the, to the number with, with the minimum, the minimum distance between cannabis operations and, and to that comment about them coming everywhere.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, while talking about the distance in between operations of that thousand meters, that one kilometer, a lot of municipalities, quite frankly, when we looked at, uh, industry standards didn't do anything when it came to proximity between the two, they focused on lot area and they focused on setbacks mostly. So we added that initially, we were at 500 meters. Um, we did hear a lot of input at the public meeting stage, we went up to a thousand, we doubled it. And the reason being is, you know, I completely understand where you're coming from. It's just again, uh, and I hate going back to it over and over again, but we have to be careful because yeah, if we take it too far and, and over regulate, this being a recognized agricultural use, uh, you know, the chat, the the possibility of a successful challenge against what we're trying to achieve here becomes higher. I would say, you know, when you talk about parcel sizes, it is true generally, the, the parcels below the escarpment are a little bit smaller as you get closer to the QEW. Is there opportunity within them to, to, you know, are there some that are sufficient size below the escarpment? Sure, there are, absolutely. I can't say that there aren't. I don't have exact numbers today in terms of how many. But I would say, you know, you, you kind of said you're a little bit concerned about some of the odor mitigation that can be applied. I would tell you that that has been an evolving, uh, line of work too. Um, I know that, uh, you know, we're not alone in having our issues with odor and impacts to more sensitive land uses. So as we move forward, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be one of those things where that will evolve as well. But in the meanwhile, uh, I do know of, of operations that have been, at least they've been touted as, you know, not emitting any odor that's caused anybody any issue in other places. Off the top of my head, I can't think of one to state for you. But, uh, that is, you know, what we're looking at, um, in the reality of the world we're living in. That's one of the main things we can do to, um, to address odor impacts. So that's what we're trying to drill down on through our framework.
Okay. And would you allow me one more, Chairman, first?
Sure, go ahead.
Just in relation again to the comment I made to, uh, to Mr. Bender, the opportunity for people to, to combine properties. Should we not, uh, I think that opens up the door to quite a bit more oper- places, uh, for the cannabis industry. Is that something we should address or are you, are you, uh, are you okay with all the other issues as far as setbacks and, and frontages, uh, disabling that option?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So it, it's kind of a difficult one because some of our policies and even provincial policy when it comes to farms, you know, I'm talking more in the green belt now, increasing viability with a larger parcel size that results is like, is all, always seen as a positive. So if we go ahead and regulate and say, you, you can't do that now, you know, I think we might run into some issues there. The idea is, you know, we have to draw a line in the sand, which we've done through our review of industry practices, through our review of all the concerns that we've received. I know there's quite a few that, uh, would like, you know, huge, huge minimum parcel sizes. But, you know, eight hectares for us, that was on the upper end of what we were seeing. It's true Pelham has 10, but that's only, you know, that's for their standard cultivation. They've got smaller parcel sizes for micro cultivation, which is a smaller yield. Uh, so it kind of varies, but we tried to pick something in the upper end. And if they choose to merge two properties together, then again, we would, we would fall back on our other levers to enforce. But I, I don't think we can get into regulating them merging two pieces together, unfortunately.
Thank you, uh, Matt. Thank you, Chairman, first.
Thank you, Counselor, and I believe we have Counselor Renee next. Madam Deputy Clerk, thank you. Counselor Renee.
Uh, thank you, Chair McPherson. Um, you know, all great discussion coming out of, uh, Mr. Bender's presentation as well as this report. Uh, just a comment and, and maybe a question through you, Mr. Chair, to, uh, Mr. Bruder. So, you know, I, I'm fairly confident, I guess time will tell, you know, that, um, you know, these adoptions of these amendments to our official plan and the zoning bylaw will, um, will put proper, um, handcuffs on these operators. You know, hopefully these minimum setbacks and these minimum lot areas as well as, you know, the fact that they can't convert or retrofit, uh, any existing structures. I, I have, I still have a concern through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Bruder. You know, when, when I look at Mr. Fraser's letter from the Greenhouse Growers Alliance of Lincoln, and, you know, that was sent almost a year ago, October 25th, where, where Mr. Fraser said in, in his letter, and I quote, "It may be difficult for grandfathered cannabis operations to reduce or eliminate odors, but that does not necessarily mean that they should be exempt from trying to find ways to do this." So, so through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Bruder. You know, are you confident that this nuisance bylaw and additional enforcement is going to meet, um, the concerns of our residents when it comes to grandfathered cannabis operations moving forward?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I am positive, Counselor. I mean, a- as you said, you know, time will tell. But at this point, given the opportunities that we have available to us, options available to us as a municipality, I think we're taking the best road we can possibly take at this given time. I know we are on the lead when it comes to, to business licensing, specific to these types of operations. Nuisance bylaw, I, you know, the city of Hamilton recently implemented one, we're, we're, you know, so it, it, those kinds of things are being done, but from the business licensing piece, I really think this is an effective way for us to go back to those existing facilities and requiring, uh, odor mitigation where there is none or where there is just minimal. So, uh, short answer, yes, I am confident.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bruder. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor, and we have Counselor Regina.
Thank you, Chairman McPherson. Uh, my question is about, well, let's start with the definition of cannabis production facility. No, no, I'll start with my question. My question is, there has to be a minimum separation distance of 1,000 meters between cannabis production facilities. And my question is about outdoor growing facilities. So those, when you look at the definition of cannabis production facility, it says this shall mean any, any business, structure or use licensed and or authorized to grow. So the definition of cannabis, cannabis production facility includes an outdoor operation. And so regardless of the size of any burning facility, it would have to be 1,000 feet apart from any other outdoor or indoor cannabis growing. Sorry, cannabis production facility. Have I got that right? And, and further to that, I'm going to ask how that would come into play if two parcels were to, or if, uh, somebody were to purchase a neighboring parcel. Where would the checks and balances come in place to make sure that these two amalgamated parcels are 1,000 feet away from any other, um, cannabis production facility? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, any new facility that, we did include the word use in that definition as you caught, Counselor, which, which opens it up to outdoor facilities as well. And the idea is any new facility would be subject to that requirement for that 1,000 meters. The, you know, the only caveat is if we have two existing operations that are already there and they're not, well, then they're, they are grandfathered. But if you had an existing operation and then a new one was looking to, to set up shop, they would have to be at least 1,000 meters away from any uh, cannabis facility. So, uh, just, uh, to answer your question, that would remain true even if, you know, a property right beside was purchased, they would still have to comply, so.
Okay. And so for a clarification question, if an existing grandfathered outdoor cannabis operation wanted to purchase some property next door and expand their operation, would they be allowed to expand that use?
Through you, Mr. Chair, they, they could potentially, but they would still have to meet all the required provisions of the zoning and official plan. So all the new policies that we're putting forth, uh, for your recommendation today, should they be approved, would apply to that addition or whatever expansion that they were considering.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, and seeing, uh, no other questions, I have a couple myself. And, uh, first of all, I would, uh, I would absolutely support, um, a, uh, a map of the town showing what, what properties would qualify under our new, um, setbacks. I, I think it's in our best interest to know, uh, the, the, I guess the size of the, uh, you know, available property, uh, and to really see it, uh, you know, for ourselves before we, we go ahead and approve uh, what we're doing here. So I would support that. My questions, um, are two really. One is, you know, in the document, uh, we, we reference, uh, recommended changes of the official plan that we require that only purpose-built facilities are, be permitted. And, you know, I think, I think we're all, we're absolutely all on the same page that, that we are not, uh, we are not liking, uh, some of the outputs of, uh, some of the, uh, marijuana facilities across the town. We, we absolutely do not like the smell. And in some cases, we don't like the light. And in some cases, we don't like the, the safety concerns. I think those are the three that, that we are challenged with. And for the most part, I would, I would say that those are generally tied to medical licenses that, that, and I can't say that categorically, I, I understand that, but when we, when we have experienced commercial licenses, we have, uh, seen some good neighbors. We have, you know, and I do know that up in their last months, uh, were, uh, not as good as they were, uh, for the first probably year or two, uh, in their operation. We all toured that up facility and, and even inside that facility, we saw the professionalism and the level of, uh, care that was taken within that facility to meet all of the required, all of the requirements of the, of the federal government. And in, in my, uh, opinion, we're good neighbors. So when I think about, uh, this, um, only, uh, purpose-built, built facilities, uh, I think about the new, as Counselor Mikulak, uh, mentioned, the new owner going into that existing facility. And if that new owner happens to be a good neighbor, the potential is there for, you know, an economic, uh, boost to the community. We, we know that there was very, very good jobs that were, um, in at Up Cannabis. And, uh, the people that we talked to in that facility were, were professional people. They, they were, they were well-educated, professional people in their field. So I really question the need for this particular item in the, in the zoning bylaw. When, uh, we have all of the other parameters there, we have all of the setbacks and we have all of the, the, um, the planning pieces in place, uh, that, um, would, you know, prevent a, a, uh, facility from, from opening up. And if, if a facility, if, if a commercial, uh, licensee comes along and, and qualifies to all of those, those setbacks, but is going into an existing facility, why would we prevent that, that company from setting up in town? So I, I guess I, I put that to Mr. Bruder or, or Mr. Krikopoulos?
Um, quite a nice start, Mr. Chair. So, um, I, when we first came forward with the public meeting, this was back in November with some of our draft provisions. Our wording at first was we wanted to encourage purpose-built as the first option. However, we did receive a lot of input. Um, I think we received some around the, your table, on the, the council table as well as lots of input from residents. And even a couple, um, at the agency workshops that, um, retrofitting like these existing greenhouses that are there now, they're not meant, uh, to be, you know, used for cannabis cultivation, whereas, uh, you know, they're a completely enclosed facility, that, you know, where air filtration will work as optimally as it can. I understand your comments about Up Cannabis for sure, but it was our thought that, you know, if we require purpose-built facilities, then we would have control over and that, we would maximize our control over through the site plan process. Options to mitigate impacts pertaining to lighting, pertaining to odor. Uh, we would be able to do that better from the get-go rather than trying to have piecemeal solutions that are, you know, a result of, of a company trying to move into a, to a property and make it work. We wanted to see perhaps maybe a little more of a commitment for new facilities moving forward, um, to, uh, to mitigating these concerns. So it was, uh, at the time, thought based on the input received, the best option moving forward was to uh, require purpose-built facilities. And I mean, you know, some of these operations, I'm not, I can't speak for all of them, but I think, you know, it's probably in their best interests as well, uh, you know, to build to that standard, because then, you know, they're going to probably have optimal conditions for their crops, because their crops are a little more, uh, I think they're a little different in terms of what they need and all those things. So i- i- this was just a ma- a byproduct of, of what we heard and, and us figuring out a best way, the best way to mitigate a concern.
So thank you, Mr. Bruder. And I guess I would, I would lean on the license, uh, the business license, uh, piece to, to our three-pronged approach in that, uh, as I understand it, that is where we're going to bring pressure on filtration and on lighting and on, on those types of things through the licensing, are we not?
We are, uh, Mr. Chair, but that's also kind of, we really came up with that to address the situation where we have some of these existing operations that are causing an issue. Because like I said before, zoning and official plan provisions can't apply them to, to operations that are already there. So that was also a goal of our business licensing was to make sure we reach the entire industry within the town.
I guess you're not convincing me that, uh, we need to have purpose-built in, in our bylaw, because I, I think that does slam the door on, you know, some potential good, good companies coming our way that would, you know, and I don't know how many, you know, facilities we have, such as the one that Up was in, but, uh, you know, I think that just, that just eliminates uh, anybody coming in that might, that would have a commercial license that would be held to a higher standard uh, and, uh, employing some of our local people. So I, I'm not, uh, I'm not supportive of that piece of, of the bylaw. So I will move on. I guess the last question I have is, um, is more on, uh, as we move through all of these tools, if you will, to deal with, uh, the offenders. How will we act or how will we react, uh, to, um, a situation like we faced last year in Vineland where, you know, a greenhouse operator leased their facility and, uh, you know, uh, the marijuana grower went in and pretty much had a full season worth of, uh, grow. And, uh, through our, you know, trying to, you know, have them conform to our bylaw, we, um, you know, worked with them and, and got a good result. But I, I, I wonder how we are going to do. But I I I wonder how we are going to deal with that type of situation in the future and and do we um rule with a a firmer hand, if you will, and are we in a position to walk in and shut the facility down?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, we always have that ability, especially when it comes to implementing some of these other levers that we're looking to with our zoning and official plan. There's that option to go straight to enforcement. Um, I think, you know, our former manager of bylaw, Dan Smith, would say you always try to work with people first. But, you know, I think it would have to be a a little bit of discretion on how quickly we we proceed straight to enforcement, based on whatever is happening at that specific site. I mean, if the impacts are 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 so great, where, you know, there there's, there's just no way that we can facilitate working with a property owner, then we would have to proceed straight to enforcement. But I think, you know, we would still wanna maintain an open door. If there is a an opportunity to work with an operator, you know, we would try. Um, it's just, I I think I know where you're going is, you know, we wouldn't want it to drag on for too long when there's some significant impacts present. So uh the option would be there absolutely to to be a little more um forceful with enforcement. But typically, when it comes to bylaws, we try, at least initially, uh, to work with them. It always looks forward to, if you have to go through, it looks better from a from a legal perspective if you do that.
Well, I guess I guess I would agree in in probably ninety-five percent of the cases, uh, you know, that we do want, you know, to work with the uh with the uh local company as best we can. But I think I think there is, there is uh an exception here in in what we've experienced in that, you know, we've got, we've got these uh medical um licensees coming into our town and, quite frankly, taking advantage of the situation and uh are uh, you know, knowing that that we will, how we will react. And I and I think, once we put our our bylaws in place, uh, you know, our planning bylaw, our nuisance bylaw and our uh business bylaw, that we should have a, we should have a position that that if if we find, you know, that there is a offender, we will, we will react immediately. So just again, some some thoughts on that. Uh, so I do have uh Counselor Mikulak that would uh like to ask a question, Counselor.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me an opportunity to speak to this again. You you raised an interesting, it seems like we're steering ourselves towards almost doing an audit of properties as far as possibilities. And I I I just have to ask this question to um through you to Mr. Bruder. How long do you think an exercise of this nature would possibly take? And how would this fit into our timeline with regards to getting this job done as far as uh um the expiration of our interim control bylaw?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, we we were hoping uh to bring these forward for for approval tonight, obviously, so we could work towards implementation. There isn't appeal period, but that doesn't matter in terms of, uh, I think we're covered by our interim control bylaw for the appeal period. But um in terms of completing the exercise, uh, I I think it's doable, for sure. Um, I'd have to take that away and just scope that out a little bit, but I I think we could undertake that relatively quickly. Um, so, you know, I wouldn't worry too too much about that October eleventh uh deadline for that. But at the same time, you know, the sooner we get these uh provisions approved, in my opinion, the better. So that's my two cents.
I appreciate that. It just uh, you know, my my ultimate concerns, as I stated earlier, was the order mitigation and the efforts that were made by these uh producers or cultivators, and I I just wanna make sure uh that's addressed. However, you know, to to analyze each possibility, I that I I appreciate your answer as far as how long you think that would take. So that was my only uh further comment. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor. And uh, so I have Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up on your comment, um, since we're going to be sending this off with um, um, you know, uh, knowing that there's going to be the additional piece come now on the licensing. I think the point that you brought up is extremely important in terms of um sending a message, in terms of the vigor that we're going to be applying ourselves in terms of any infractions. Uh, and I'm bringing this up because we are finding, I think, across the town, whenever we have to engage with other people, that when they decide that they're not going to fulfill their part of the bargain in terms of of working together, that um sometimes we have very, very few tools at our disposal to act independently. And so I think we have to keep that in mind in terms of what can we do independently here if other agencies who should be supporting us don't. It may be part of that is, as you've described, a much more vigorous um intention around people who break the law. We're not talking about someone, um, this is not a minor infraction here. We're talking about serious lawbreakers. We waited almost two years to see any action um a few months ago. We had to wait for so many agencies to be involved and to do what they should do, uh, and the neighbors were just miserable. So we have to keep that in mind. That is our main goal here. Yes, the economy is important. But breaking the law and enforcing the law, that has got to be tantamount for for us, and I can't uh reinforce that enough. So if we do spend a little bit more time analyzing to find out really where the problems are, I don't know how we can avoid that, because there will be no turning back. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I I think I'm, before we call it the most motion, I think I'm gonna put it back to uh CIO Krokopolis and and Associate Director Planning, um, Mr. Bruder, and ask the question, do we, do we have enough feedback here tonight to move to a deferral of uh this motion? Um, and and obviously, we're working on a tight timeline, we understand that, but is is there reason to um take a, take a little bit harder look at the recommended uh bylaw, zoning bylaw and uh and make some some changes to it? So I would put that back to you two.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to you, Mr. Chair. Um, I mean, Mr. Bruder can definitely chime in. Um, I think what Council's raised uh are some good points and um Mr. Fraser, Mr. Deanie and and Mr. Bruder and I have been just going back and forth during this meeting. And Mr. Fraser offered just some insight into how a process of such mapping can occur, and I think we can reach out to OMAFRA uh to do so. Um, I don't know if that changes in any considerable way uh what this bylaw includes, because I think the bylaw is also intended to be something that we can defend uh and that is both restrictive uh the way I think the community and council wants us to be, but isn't so restrictive that it gets knocked down or thrown out or or torn down uh within a court. So we've tried to balance that fine line and finesse, you know, how strict do we be versus um how uh how supportive of our businesses we can be. Um, I mean, we can definitely go back and look at it. I think time is of the essence. Uh, we can look at some of the mapping. I don't know how long it's gonna take. I've asked uh Mr. Fraser that, I'm about to ask him that. Uh, the other comment I would just make as it relates to enforcement, and and I understand Council's frustration, because like you, I'm on the receiving end of many of those messages and emails and calls, and I'm out there walking and and meeting with residents, or as are you, as are a number of staff. Uh, if we look at that one, I think you referenced, Counselor, not the one that took us two years because of the agencies, but the one that took us probably about three or four weeks to address. I think we're always balancing, if we go in there and shut it down, uh, and issue an order, they can appeal it. The appealing of uh of a sort of infraction notice that we present to them or an order that we give to them then stops the process and starts another process. And that other process is more of that adjudicative process that allows them to appeal it, goes in front of a justice and so forth. And I think, while that isn't necessarily what um, but I think residents often wanna hear. Uh, in that particular case, we got compliance, and yes, it took us a month, and the mayor was on site, and a number of us were on site. Um, but I think uh that's often what we're trying to seek. So, I mean, the deferral, I think the only thing we continuously look at is the the interim control bylaw expiring. We don't wanna find ourselves not having anything, uh, but we're definitely within Council's hands uh on that, but I'm not sure if Mr. Bruder has anything to add, or if Mr. Fraser uh has has messaged Mr. Deanie or Mr. Bruder anything further.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think, Mike, you said everything uh correctly. It it's just, yeah, we're at the point here where, you know, I I think we could probably turn around a mapping exercise. What it ends up shaking out in terms of changes, I'm not sure about. Um, like I said, we developed the framework that we've put before you, because we think it's the best option moving forward that balances the need to regulate this versus um the potential for it to be uh challenged, the potential for it to not go forward, because ultimately, that is not what we wanna see here. Um, we would need, you know, it to put these regulations in place, they they have to be approved prior to the the deadline for the interim control bylaw, which is, you know, October eleventh. So while there is maybe a a tiny bit of time, there isn't much. So um, those are the only comments that I wanted to make in addition.
Okay, so so thank you to you, gentlemen, uh, and uh, you know, maybe to to Mike's comments. Um, I guess, I guess the difference that I would see is uh that the twenty-third street uh happened under the interim control bylaw. And the and there was some legal uh question as to whether that would stand up. This this now passing through bylaws, we have those bylaws in place, so we have the tools to do what we need to do. And and if it happens to end us up in court, then may maybe it does, you know. So uh, that's, I guess, where I'm coming from on on that issue. And as far as the mapping is concerned, I think, I think, Mr. Bruder, that what I what I would like to see and and I uh, I would say that I did bring this up at at a previous uh planning meeting when we were talking on cannabis was, you know, with and with these setbacks, what does that look like for us? I mean, it's just information. Yes, it may not change, you know, the decision that we're we're making tonight, but at least we're informed that if we look at at the town, you know, we can see, okay, if these if these setbacks are in place, there is only these, you know, five properties across the the entire uh town that that would qualify. Or there's these fifty properties that would qualify. We don't know. We don't know that today. So it's it's being informed to be able to to make the decision and stand behind the decision. Right now, I'm hearing from Mr. Bender, he doesn't know. They're doing it to the best of their ability. He doesn't really know what what this would, how this would impact us in this town. So I just think it's in our best interest to do the due diligence now to find out how does this play out? How does this play out in in our town?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to uh chime in and let advise committee that the province of Ontario, through OMAFRA and others, the Greater Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance, they've all farms have been mapped. It's been done now for several years, so I don't think this is going to be a a challenge uh at all. And it includes the size of farms and all the activities that go on that land at the current time. So I'm sure that um that we can get this information pretty quickly. Thank you.
Okay, so uh, I'm I'm hearing that uh we move forward with the uh motion. So there be no further discussion. I have a motion moved by Counselor Regina that one, council enact and pass official plan amendment number attached as appendix A of this report to include policies in the official plan regulating development associated with cannabis cultivation and production. And two, that council enact and pass zoning bylaw attached as appendix B of this report to include provisions in the zoning bylaw regulating development associated with cannabis cultivation and production. And three, that council enact and pass a bylaw to repeal and replace bylaw ninety-two dash thirteen site plan control attached as appendix C of this report to include a cannabis production facility in the list of agricultural buildings that are not exempt from site plan control. I will now ask our deputy clerk to call out the vote.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Please unmute your mics. Counselor Brené.
Support.
Counselor McPherson.
No.
Counselor Mikulak.
No.
Counselor Pachariva.
Yes.
Counselor Reimer.
Yes.
Counselor Regina.
Yes.
Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Timmers.
Yes.
Mayor Easton.
Support.
And that motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. We will now consider item six point five, report PD dash twenty twenty-one.
Sorry, to Chair McPherson, um, if the vote is carried, we have to um move on to the next motion, the planning motion.
Is it listed here?
It is.
I'm sorry?
It's a motion moved by Counselor Russell.
Got it. I have a motion moved by Counselor Russell. A council considered all of the written and oral submissions and agrees with the planning report, analysis and recommendation and finds that, subject to the conditions of approval, these amendments meet the Planning Act criteria, are consistent with the provincial policy statement and comply with the growth plan, the Niagara region official plan and the town official plan. Deputy clerk, would you please call out the vote?
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Please unmute your mics. Counselor Brené.
Yes.
Counselor McPherson.
No.
Counselor Mikulak. Count, Counselor Mikulak, you're on mute.
Oh.
Thank you. Counselor Pachariva.
Yes.
Counselor Reimer.
Yes.
Counselor Regina.
Yes.
Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Timmers.
Yes.
Mayor Easton.
Support.
Thank you, and that motion is carried.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk, and we now consider item six point five, report PD dash twenty-one dash twenty, Heritage Inventory Registry. Do members of council have any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Sorry, Chair McPherson, we have Counselor Timmers, Counselor Brené.
Who is first?
Counselor Timmers.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. I think I'll reserve my comments till all that the other counselors go ahead of me. Thank you.
Counselor Brené.
Counselor Brené, you're on.
You're on mute, Counselor.
Counselor.
I did, I did click it, but I guess it didn't. How how's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor, yes, thank you, Chair McPherson. So, you know, very, very pleased uh to see uh that this registry is coming before council. I I'm not gonna lie, I I, there's a number of people that have been very frustrated that this hasn't come forward over the last two years. Um, you know, not gonna beat up staff, there's lots of reasons, I guess, why it hasn't come back, public engagement, an election in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, and quite honestly, our heritage committee has not met for the past seven or eight months. So um, this has pretty well been a lost year, but very, very pleased to see that this is is now coming, that letters are being sent out. You know, everyone's read the report. There's been a lot of work done on this report, on this registry, going back to when Scott, uh, counselor or consultant Scott Foster cleaned up the registry, bringing it down from close to nine hundred down to the two thirty-one it's at now. Um, you know, we had an emergency meeting this morning, I'm not gonna you know, we had an emergency meeting this morning. I'm not gonna get into it. Probably some counselors are aware of it with regards to the property on King Street. You know, one of the, one of the things, and I I've, I've been quite vocal with the C O about this, you know, it it's one thing to say, you know, we're gonna put something on a registry, but I I believe, you know, that at some point, you know, this this council is gonna have to make a decision on what we want to do with heritage. And when I say that, you know, I'm looking at the list, I'm looking at the registry, and we have pockets, you know, we have sixty-seven properties on King Street in Beamsville. We have, um, I believe it's twenty-three. Uh, let me just get my facts here, so I'm not quoting numbers that aren't accurate. Um, we have twenty-three properties on Victoria Avenue in Vineland. We have fifteen properties on Main Street in Jordan. I remember, Mr. Mr. Chair, I remember back in two thousand and fourteen or maybe early two thousand and fifteen, Counselor Pachariba and I and the mayor went for a walk in Ward Two. And we started talking, and that's six years ago, we talked about heritage districts. And and I do believe when you look at lists like this of sixty-seven properties on King Street, twenty-three properties on Victoria Avenue, fifteen properties on Main Street, it's well over a hundred properties that are on the registry, that this council is gonna have to take a long look to decide what we want to do. And if that's something we want to do in in determining heritage districts, because, you know, it's one thing to hire consultants, professional planners and professional heritage people to say this doesn't have any heritage value as as part of the Heritage Act. That's fine. But I I don't believe that as a council, we want to be looked at decades from now that, you know, we allowed hundred-year-old properties uh, to be demolished. And that's really, you I'm I'm kind of rambling here and I'll I'll try to, I'll try to, I'll try to wrap up. But, you know, I think we've dodged a bullet from two thousand and fourteen when the Victor, when the Vineland Public School was um, was demolished. We've, we've, we've dodged a bullet or 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 maybe I say played Russian roulette for the last six years. But I think it's catching up to us. We've had six, two properties now on King Street approaching the town of Beamsville where uh, we now have one property that's been demolished and another one that probably now moving forward will be, you know, be demolished in a very short period of time. And, you know, these properties, they might not meet the criteria of the Heritage Act. Um, but they certainly have contextual and heritage value when you look at hundred-year-old properties. So I'm very glad to see this registry um, moving forward. I hope it gets adopted, ratified at our Committee of the Whole on September twenty-eighth. Uh, obviously, this will be a uh, a working list, one will that future councils will work with as we move forward. Um, and and I'm glad, and I want to thank Monica and Matt and Kathleen, all the people that have worked on this, and really glad to see that letters have been sent out to all those people that are on the registry. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chair McPherson.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Chairman. First, um, through you to my door to map, I guess, doesn't matter. Um, just, I'd like you to walk me through the non-designated part of that registry. And if I'm reading this correctly, or if I'm understanding correctly, if I'm a homeowner that has a home on that non-designated list, the, the effect that it has on me is a sixty-day waiting period if I wish to demolish the house. If I want to put on an addition, a carport, landscaping, anything that requires building permits, as long as I have those building permits, do I still need approval from the Heritage Committee? On the non-designated list.
Through you, Chair McPherson. Um, yes, being on the non-designated list, you do not need any heritage permits. Um, you do not need any um, special permits for additions or any or or landscaping or anything like that. It's solely for demolition. It's uh, the sixty-day requirement is solely for demolition. No other heritage permits. It does not require to go through Heritage Committee uh, for any other permits.
Okay. And and another question, if I may, the, the letters to the, to the uh, homeowners, they have the, they have the option to be on this list or not, once they, once they've been put on it by the Heritage Committee, do they have that option? Or is that, is that the way I read it, there's some, there's some uh, third-party input?
Yep. Through you, Chair McPherson, uh, through to the Counselor. Um, yes, the, the list is very fluid, so properties can be added or removed at any time um, through the Heritage Committee. Um, and so we've asked for comments by mid-September. Um, so notices have gone out to the two hundred and thirty-one property owners. Um, if there are any property owners that do not wish to be on the list, um, we are not going to put them on the list at this time. Um, like I said, the, the list is very fluid, so we're, it, we will, the Heritage Committee will constantly be um, consulting with property owners and um, and adding properties um, annually and as well. Yes, property owners can request that their properties be removed from the list. Um, the only reason to remove your property from the list would be if you're looking to demolish though, because that's really the only implication.
Okay. Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Chairman First.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, and now I think we go to Counselor Timmers.
I thank you, Chair McPherson. I have a few comments. Um, and I've been on the Heritage Committee now for six years. And when I joined the Heritage Committee six years ago, I was really quite surprised to find out that the registry had actually been in around for maybe more than fifteen years. So, you know, all the registry truly is, is a collection of properties. And some are designated and some are not designated. And the properties may have character-supporting resources, character-defining, defining resources, and some have significant resources. To date, we have twenty-six designated properties in the town of Lincoln. So there's a lot of questions often about the registry. What does it mean? And and Counselor Reimer, I'm glad you asked your questions. Because really, all it means is the Heritage Committee has identified them, and we need that if a demolition permit comes, it's a pause. All it is is a pause. So we can look at that property and say, is it designation-worthy, yes or no? And that would be done through Heritage Consultant. Um, today, we had a emergency Heritage Committee meeting um, for exactly this purpose. There was a property identified on King Street and um, of course, we brought in a Heritage Consultant. And it was determined that the property was not designation-worthy. It did not meet any of the criteria. So that is what we're trying to do, and that is the whole uh, reasoning behind the registry. And as our community is growing, which it has been, it's been just, you know, it's a place to come, it's growing leaps and bounds. This is going to become even more important. And we have to continually look for properties that perhaps need to be added to the registry and and some that will be removed. Um, we need to look at preserving our heritage for the new newcomers. As our community grows, it's something that we have to um, really work at preserving, protecting and preserving for generations. We want to share our stories and share our heritage and our culture. So that's basically what the registry is about. And I am absolutely thrilled to see that we are here tonight discussing it and that it will be coming to council. Um, one other comment, I, something that came out of the Heritage Committee today, and I I just wanted to put it out there. One of the comments was, when the house is gone, it's like a broken window. And I I really was thinking about that concept and how important our streetscape and our cultural heritage landscape is. So if we look at it not as a broken window, but a frame, what kind of glass are we gonna put in there? So what will it reflect on the streetscape? I just want to leave you with that, because I think that's where we need to focus, is completing the streetscape and maintaining the cultural heritage feel of the street when we lose a property that perhaps is not designation-worthy. So that is, that's where I will leave you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I have Counselor Pachariba.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna try to do this by the light of my phone because I've, we've got a power outage here. So just, um, and and I've been on this merry-go-round of heritage ever since I've been on council, and the same things keep coming up. So, you know, concern that taxes will increase if the property is designated. Uh, no heritage value in their opinion. So it, it probably, and this is directed to to staff and Counselor Brené and Counselor Timmers. Now that this registry is going to be in, go into effect, are we going to ratchet up with our new revitalized committee and get the word out there to our citizens, what heritage is all about, and dispel these rumors that keep floating around? Please, is that going to be job one as you, as you set your work plan? Because I think that would go a heck of a long way to getting people to come forward and 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 clean up this confusion.
Can I direct that to staff?
I can speak to that through you, Chair. Yes, definitely. Um, it is on the Heritage Committee's work plan to um, for for additional public consultation, any type of um, e events that there are, doors open or or any, any type of heritage events, uh, the Heritage Committee will have a presence. Um, we plan on um, providing pamphlets and and really um, speaking to the public and and letting them know what it really means to be designated. Um, the, just to be clear, that the, the, these properties here are to be on the non-designated list, so there's no legal implication, there's no, nothing is going on title of their property. Um, and yeah, but definitely the Heritage Committee will be, will be doing some further public consultation.
Counselor, is that?
Well, yeah, and if, and and that's good to hear. And if, again, I I would take it one step further and and I would develop a little um, you know, handout that that can be given out. But again, you know, put in everyone's tax bill, because you're only gonna touch the people that um, know about it. So let's get this in everyone's hands. Let's put it on the website. Let's splash it around. That heritage isn't the shadow in the room. It's not going to cause you all of these ill wills and 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 tie your hands. So if we want to create this heritage district or districts, then there's value and there's grants and there's, and there's ways around things. So eh, let's, let's dispel the myths out there. And and I would say that that should be job one. So, thanks.
The shadow in the room, as we look at you, the shadow in the room. Well said. So I have a, I do not see any other speakers.
Chair McPherson, I see Counselor Timmers' hand up.
Is, as she had her. Counselor Timmers, are you good or do you?
I I'd like to respond to Counselor Pachariba if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, just regards to communication, I I think we've made some great steps. And last term, we had a huge event that happened in Jordan. There were eighty, eighty people attended, recognizing families that take great pride in their homes. And it was a fantastically successful event. And I, we also published an amazing handbook. I think we've done some great things. I I'm sure we can keep going, but we truly have made some great strides. And the letters, the letters have been sent out to every homeowner that's on the registry and did, so far, I don't know how many people have responded, but this was done as well two years ago. And anyone who wanted to be removed was removed. So, you know, this is not news to those two hundred and thirty-one homes again, because they were notified two years ago. So I think we're, we're making great strides. But, you know, we have a heritage page on on social media and but I agree, you can always keep going. But um, anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward. And we also have the incentive program, and there's been applications made as well to the incentive program. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I'm a clear, Madam Deputy, Deputy Clerk?
No, Chair McPherson, we now have Mayor Easton's hand up.
Chairman, I don't want to belabor the discussion, but I want to reinforce the issue of look and feel. Even with all of these measures, and they are measures, but like a lot of things, they come together, they hinge on other policies. And so the whole business of whether you can preserve everything or not, whether it's possible to even do that, will sometimes result in the loss of 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 a dwelling. And then the onus is on us to be able to negotiate, for staff to be able to negotiate with developers, to create a building that has the look and feel of the building that was lost. Or even to improve upon it, maybe it's a, it's it's better architect, uh, better, a better architectural look. And I think that's what we learned from the assessment that was done on the property on King Street. It didn't have those redeeming factors, but to lose that look and feel along with the colonists, which is right near to it, and then there's another space where we've asked to developer to come up with a better plan, uh, because it's beside Woodburn Cottage, all of that will hang together better. As Counselor Timmer says, it isn't a broken glass. It's what kind of frames are we creating in each one of those spots as we go along? And so this is only one part of it. The planning piece of it is going to be more important than ever in terms of that kind of negotiation. And I think in order to deal with infill, we're going to have to become quite expert at it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So uh, there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Timmers that this report be received for information and that a copy of the draft Heritage Inventory Registry, the register, be forwarded to the Heritage Committee and notice be sent to all property owners whose properties are on the draft registry for comment and consideration prior to being presented to council for approval. And that staff bring back a final report for council approval at its Committee of the Whole meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call out the vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. Please unmute your mics. Counselor Brené.
Yes.
Counselor McPherson.
Yes.
Counselor Mikulak.
Yes.
Counselor Pachariba.
Yes.
Counselor Reimer.
Yes.
Counselor Regina.
Yes.
Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Timmers.
Yes.
Mayor Easton.
Support.
And that motion is carried.
We have now concluded the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. We will now rotate to allow Chair Mikulak to assume the chair at this time for the General Business and Finance Committee agenda. Chair Mikulak.
Thank you very much, Chair McPherson. Um, we're gonna go to uh, item seven point one. Um, first, I should welcome everybody to the General Business and Finance Committee agenda meeting, portion of the meeting. Uh, seven point one delegations. Uh, we have no delegations this evening for the General Business and Finance Committee. Uh, next, item seven point two consent agenda. We have no consent agenda items this evening. Seven point three, report. Uh, we will now consider item seven point three, report F N dash zero eight dash two zero Corporate Systems Master Plan. We have a staff presentation for this report. Please note that you will have up to ten minutes. Um, Ms. Twala.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, and through, good evening, counselors. Tonight's presentation is gonna be provided by Susan Chase from Perry Group Consulting. She's spent the past year leading the review of Lincoln's Corporate Systems and I T operations. I wanted to state, start by thanking council for the investments that you've made in technology over the past few years. It shows the commitment that you have to innovation. The intent of the master plan is to act as a compass as we take the next steps towards digital service delivery. It's important to note that although the master plan has some specific recommendations, technology and our business environment are changing at a rapid pace. It requires the plan to have flexibility. So the prioritized list of projects is merely a starting point, and the I T Steering Committee will use recommended procedures to keep it updated on an ongoing basis. Um, a few of the recommendations. A few of the recommendations have already been implemented. We held our first IT Steering Committee meeting just this morning. But any of the recommendations that require resource requests are going to be brought back to council during the annual budget deliberations. So the review that was undertaken by Perry Group, it included input from staff, council, residents and local businesses to determine a vision for the town's technology and digital services. The report's quite comprehensive, but Susan's going to review the primary takeaways of that vision as well as their recommendation for immediate next steps. Then she and staff will be more than happy to answer any of your questions regarding either the review or the report. So I think Trish is going to put up the presentation and then I'll leave it to Susan to take you through. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trualla. Welcome, Susan Chase. How are you today? Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you very much for having me. Really appreciate it.
Quite the report you've produced.
It was quite an assignment. It was very interesting. There was a lot of information to be gathered. So I hope the report is, proves to be helpful.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to, uh, your remarks, your comments.
Okay, thank you. Through you, uh, then Chair Mikulak to the rest of council as well. Uh, thank you very much for your time this evening. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through each slide of this presentation in great detail. I will talk to most of them, but some of the others are there just for your info. And of course, as already mentioned, uh, further details are available in the report. We started this project last year with the goal to identify and prioritize business processes that could be digitized in order to provide greater efficiencies and better customer service. We also had the goal to provide a prioritized roadmap of projects that would guide the implementation and use of technology for the town to move forward. Technology can be very expensive and it can involve quite a bit of change. So the town really wanted to be sure they were doing the right projects at the right time. Next slide, please. And again. Um, so to set the context, we know that so many people, actually over 92% are now online and that the expectations for services have certainly changed. Most of us have had some experience with online services such as Amazon, Netflix or Google. And I will note that these services are sometimes completely online like Netflix, but others are hybrid service such as Amazon. I may shop, order and pay online, but I end up having a delivery of a product, usually delivered by a person. Well, for now, anyway, we do know that Amazon are testing delivery by drone. So we'll see where that goes. Next slide, please. Um, these have all led to new customer service standards such as convenience, um, easy to understand and that the services are all intuitive. For example, when I log into my Amazon account, I don't expect to have to re-enter my name and address and the shipping details at every time. I expect that it's already there. And that's no matter whether I'm shopping for a book, piece of furniture or whatever, it already knows me. Next slide, please. So people really do expect Amazon-like services from their government too. Few years ago, the top Fortune 100 companies were all oil-based companies. But now that they are these digital companies and customers have responded really positively to these new service delivery models. This is who we are compared with now as municipalities when we're delivering our services. Next slide, please. People want for, people want from their services to be able to have self-service. They want a simple user experience. They want it to be super fast. They want it to be very responsive. They want it to be available on the web or on an app. You know, for example, I have two different smartphones. I have a tablet. I have a couple of laptops. And I fully expect to be able to access whatever online services from any of these devices and for the processes to be absolutely seamless. I expect it to be available anytime and anywhere. Next slide, please. We all know how banking has changed from the days of lining up for a teller between the hours of 10 to three to now where I can deposit a check by simply taking a photo or simply through e-transfers. We believe that if people trust their bank to manage this kind of service digitally, they will also trust their local government to do so safely and securely. Next slide, please. Um, these are some of the key trends that were seen in government these days. Everything from evidence-based decision-making to the digital economy, to the Internet of Things. We shared examples with staff during our many workshops and interviews to help inspire their brainstorming. And of course, most of them have already heard about many of these types of trends. So we look towards those as, as foundations for our conversations for moving forward. Next slide, please. And then, of course, COVID happened. Not only did this change the trajectory of this particular project, it also changed how government delivers services. Everyone had to pivot super fast to find ways to have staff to work from home, to continue to deliver services, even though there were no access to town facilities. And to make it possible for some processes to be completed, to be handled digitally instead of manually, such as accounts payable or even time sheets for payroll. The pandemic, the pandemic has proven so quickly and so emphatically how technology can help with service delivery as well as make it easier for staff to work. I mean, look at this meeting right here. It's the perfect example. Lincoln was really in great shape, having already started to move towards digitization. For example, they had a solid technical infrastructure, some best-of-breed software applications in use. They'd implemented Office 365 already, allowing remote access. But also they were working on the development of this roadmap and defining the goals to become more connected and more available. People and staff really were already thinking digital. Next slide, please. My next few slides are actually a summary of the findings. Um, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through these right now. What you, what we found was that the technical infrastructure and the foundations were really quite solid. Staff were super engaged. We met with reps from the business community. We asked residents what they wanted to see. And of course, I talked with all of you. So we received a lot of valuable and very interesting feedback. So I'm just going to skip through these next few slides. If we can go next, 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 a bunch of them. Keep going and now, okay, this one right here. Thank you very much. That was perfect. Uh, so the ultimate goal is really to provide seamless and transparent services, no matter how they're accessed or who's actually accessing the service. Whether it's staff in the office or staff out in the field working on a water leak, or perhaps it's a smart device monitoring traffic, or it might be a resident or even a developer. The services should be accessing the same data, the same information, using the same types of tools. And these principles led us to develop the four key areas of focus for the town's digital roadmap. Next slide, please. So the first key area of focus was about digital services. And what this means is moving more services online, such as service requests, forms, payments, that sort of thing. Making sure we can harmonize our services into single experiences. Why should I have to call into the town hall multiple times to talk to multiple people about the different services that I need and get from my local government? It really is about making it simpler, making it more convenient and making it a very positive experience. For example, upgrading some of the existing solutions that are already in place will enable greater online access for both staff and the public. Next slide, please. Digitized processes is very similar to the banking example earlier. We can't deposit a check using the photo if they lack the backend systems or if the processes aren't ready to accept it this way. So we need to make sure that all these backend systems are fully modernized and they're integrated in a way that reduces duplication. And this means they'd be ready for transforming the service delivery. If we're designing new services, for example, a customer service reporting app, we need to design it to be digital from the beginning. So for example, implementing a solution that provides online access for employees to access their information, such as their vacation, their time off, perhaps their pay, but also an internet that would provide for greater collaboration amongst staff so that they can have greater sharing of, of their data and of information reports and what have you. Next slide, please. Um, through this assessment, staff identified a bunch of processes that required a more detailed review. We did a deep dive and evaluation of these processes and we identified opportunities for improvement and digitization. It's really important to note that we need to design our services and processes around the customer need, not really our more traditional processes. So part of this new service delivery paradigm, we need to spend time building empathy and understanding the customers' needs as well as defining the business process. So if we're going to launch, for example, if we're going to launch a new building permit service online, we need to recognize that there are different types of customers. We have big developers, we have small developers. We also have the homeowners working on the weekend. They all have very different needs, but the municipality also has requirements that need to be met. There's legislation that needs to be followed. So we went through these deep process reviews and we were able to identify opportunities for digitization and they helped formulate part of the final work plan. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the next strategic area of focus was the digital workplace and workforce. So this is about making it easier for staff to perform their tasks through increased use of mobile devices and digital collaboration. COVID certainly emphasized the need, but also the ability for staff to adapt. Considerations have to be given to look at upgrading some of the existing platforms such as the GIS to one that's more widely used by our, by your neighbors and to expand the use of the Office 365 platform and providing more training and better access to the different tools available through that program. These are really simpler solutions that will make collaboration easier as well as providing for greater digital access. And again, the pandemic really helped to accelerate the, uh, availability of people being able to understand and learn these new solutions and that business can continue and they can carry on. Change is difficult, um, and it's very hard for a lot of people to move, but COVID forced us. And now we know we can and we can pivot even more. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the next strategic area of focus was really to elevate IT is what we called it. And this is about recognizing that technology now plays a very important role in current service delivery. From enabling remote workers using GPS and location-based services and fleet management, for example, to testing and technology solutions and training of staff. The IT department is no longer just a back office cost center, but a necessary tool to truly leverage data and analytics to provide for much better and much more informed decision-making. Establishing a new model for delivering technology services through a more strategic perspective and mandate. As I mentioned before, municipalities are truly leveraging technology to do more with less, to deliver more efficient operations and to deliver services more in line with the customer needs. To do this, we have to provide that focus, that strategic focus on technology throughout the organization. Next slide, please. So finally, we identified three major decision points. And next slide. So the focus for the digitization roadmap was really to be, to implement solutions that will enable the town of Lincoln to become a leader in municipal service delivery, to take advantage of technology, to bring about key efficiencies and how you plan and deliver those services. And to really leverage technology, become a smart city and improve the local economy, opportunities and ideally the environment, education and security of this entire community. Next slide. Decision two is about recognizing the need to focus on the process first and then the solution. This means not being dazzled by the sparkly shiny, as I like to call it. It's figure out what is really needed and does it fit in the technology environment? It means taking advantage of the work that has already been done and the investments that have already been made and build on them. This enables for greater integration. It reduces duplication and, and redundancy. And it provides better security of, of the overall processes. Next slide. So decision three is about investing in IT. Like I said before, IT is no longer back office expense. It really has to be viewed as a true, uh, business process requiring budget decisions. So note that we have these two comparators here that show Lincoln, while doing an excellent job so far in leveraging technology, really is far behind others in the, in its investment. So this means we want to invest in the right resources needed for projects and support in hiring the right expertise to deal with the technology issues you're dealing with. It means addressing things like cybersecurity even more to protect your data assets and by partnering with subject matter experts as well as learning from municipal partners and peers. This is all leading to the next slide. Next slide, please. Um, which is about governance. And Terry already mentioned about, uh, the IT Steering Committee. So what we were looking for in the recommendation was the need to implement a more effective governance for IT decisions. Raise it to a more corporate level. So technology decisions are better aligned and prioritized to meet the business and service delivery requirements. This has been traditionally something that has been happening at the department level or simply the IT department level. And we find that today with technology so pervasive throughout organizations and every single department requiring technology, that it can't be done that way. It's got to be viewed corporately and aligned with the corporate strategic plan, council strategic priorities and being able to be part of that overall this budget decision process. Terry mentioned that the Governance Committee has already started. Terms of reference has been developed as well as a prioritization matrix to help guide their decision-making with, while still not slowing things down. We still want decisions to be made quickly and effectively. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Um, so wrapping up, the expected outcomes of this plan is going to lead to improved efficiency and effectiveness of the delivery of services through the thoughtful implementation of technology. We are looking to position IT from moving from that solid utility, which, um, we have identified them as their position right now to be in that partner in the, all the decisions around the business. We want to, through this thoughtful implementation of technology, we believe this will lead to greater satisfaction of both residents and businesses in their local government service delivery as well as providing for increased connect connectivity and wellbeing of the community. It also means making a more engaged workplace for staff to have access to the tools and the information they need to provide an even higher level of service. And next slide. And that's about it. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you very much to staff as well as to those in the community who participated in our workshops and the surveys. They provided such valuable feedback and helped to really develop this plan that I hope and I believe is going to take Lincoln to the next level of service delivery. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Chase.
Chair Mikulak, Chair Mikulak, I believe our CEO would like to share some comments.
Okay, uh, fantastic. Mr. CEO.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a few comments I want to leave counsel with because I think then you'll have some questions. But really, I want to thank our consultant and thank the senior leadership team for their work. But, um, I think we've seen during this pandemic how digital technologies, and I know Susan focused on a little bit of this, really change our kind of daily operations uh, and really bring us together while not being in the building physically. Uh, and so I think what you have before you really is the start of a strategy, uh, that looks to position the town with what I would say is, is a fairly well-deserved, uh, reputation around technology and innovation. I know in the last number of years, the last two terms of council, we've made significant, uh, progress and investment. Uh, and I think council will see that the new director of finance position posting includes the word innovation in it. And a lot of that came from the consultation with Susan, uh, and the senior leadership team. When we looked at the importance of technology and digitization as we move forward and those two are very different things. I think we've seen most people now want to react with government online. Not everybody, we still have a lot of people coming in, but as we look at whatever this post-COVID world looks like, people don't want to stand in line to wait for a license. They want to do things in an electronic digital format. Uh, and so I know Susan highlighted the importance of the back office piece of what we do, the importance of collaborating, breaking down silos amongst departments and the need that, um, to invest in, uh, in IT and, and, you know, we can speak to the investment piece. But I guess I leave counsel with a few thoughts. One is, um, you know, we've made, as I said, some progress when we look at recreation programs and looking at those online and looking at permits, things that I remember four and a half years ago when I started was a priority for council, but that we weren't doing, um, in terms of how we were looking at. We've talked a lot about connectivity, the importance of having Wi-Fi access. We see some of the challenges that all of us have logging into these types of meetings. And so we continue to work amongst various departments, uh, for funding and applications to look at us with, that will look at us, uh, and, and help us maybe address some of the infrastructure and some of the gaps we have with high-speed internet and Wi-Fi capabilities. Economic development, Mr. Danny spoke in a number of times in terms of the importance of, uh, of making sure we've got connections for those businesses that are in our industrial parks. And, you know, more and more, we're attracting some of those technology-based businesses. We're looking at partnerships. You know, we're looking to the private sector. We've talked about the importance of security and shared services and coming together. And I think you're going to hear more of that around the IT side of life, specifically around security. And so I think, uh, those are a number of the things we're looking at. Those are a number of the important elements of it. At the end of the day, uh, for a long time, we've had a very small group within IT that's sole focus has been technology, but each and every person around this senior leadership table needs to be thinking IT. When we put our budgets together, when we look at how we engage residents, when we look at how, uh, people interact with the municipality. And so, you know, whether that be some of the stuff, and I know Council Patrick Reba over the years highlights the importance of technology when we monitor trucks moving around and GPS, uh, and how we maximize or optimize a number of the things we're doing. So, um, those are the things that are important. Uh, IT needs to live, eat, breathe these things. Uh, right now, we're, we're working to get us up to a certain level. Uh, but I think as I've said to the members of council in the past, it will be important as we move forward. And as we make these investments uh, that we bring IT to a level uh, that is uh, much more strategic in the organization. Uh, and you know, IT and, and technology isn't just again about making sure my iPhone or my BlackBerry or whatever piece of technology I use and my computer works well. It is about how we interact. It's about auditing. It's about validating things. It's about using data. Uh, and so um, you can see I'm pretty passionate about it. I know I shared these comments with Susan. Uh, I'll stop there. Uh, and, and Mr. Chair, turn it over to council to ask some questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. CEO. I, I see a couple faces here that I don't see very often. I see Mr. Redair and Mr. Brown. I've communicated with them in the past when I have issues with my phone or computers. Um, did either of you yourselves want to make any points or uh, say any words with regards to this report?
I could, uh, through Chair McIllic, um, thank the Perry Group, um, and Susan specifically um, came in, um, engaged all levels of, of the town from uh, the staff to extended management, senior management, council, uh, the public. We did outreaches for uh, economic development partners in the community and uh, came up with a fantastic plan moving forward. I was very excited today to do the first IT steering committee meeting. Uh, we made some wonderful decisions to get this project kicked off and uh, I think we're going some great places as a more collaborative department with uh, with all the business units. And uh, I think this is going to set us on the right path. So uh, uh, thank you to, to you, Mr. Chair, for a chance to speak and thanks to get to the Perry Group. It's been a great experience.
Very good comments, uh, Mr. Brown. Uh, yourself, Mr. Redair, any further comments?
Yeah, likewise, kind of echoing uh, Mr. Brown's comments. Uh, it's been kind of a long time coming, I think, for uh, for us, uh, developing this master plan. It's been a really exciting uh, initiative that we've taken on and likewise thanking uh, Susan and her team at the Perry Group for all the work that they've uh, done to help us put this together. So, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, then um, uh, do members of council have any questions to any staff member present? I see, uh, Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, through you to uh, probably to Ms. Chase. Uh, again, I, I, I don't want to belabor what uh, our CEO has eloquently um, mentioned already about the benefits of uh, investing in this type of technology and investing in a, a long-term strategy. Again, I think all the points he made are, are very well uh, well laid out and well thought out. Um, the, and I'm just putting my budget chair uh, hat on here. The one thing I didn't see uh, in any of your expected outcomes, which I thought would have been in there. Um, if we are going to be moving towards a more efficient workforce uh, with some degree of automation, with some investment in technology. Um, I didn't see any offsetting um, operational efficiencies uh, mentioned, which uh, you would think, again, if you're investing in some sort of a, a larger platform that uh, enables residents uh, and anybody who wants to interface with the town uh, in an easier and more automated sense that there might be some, some savings on the backend to at least counteract uh, some of the investment costs that we're going to be putting in. So I was, I was surprised that that wasn't included in there. And likewise, uh, I was surprised that there was no real mention of shared services. I know the CEO did mention it a little bit, but I would think that that would be one of the major um, building blocks we would want to invest in or the very least uh, seek out some solutions with some of our partners uh, in and around our geographic location. So I'm just wondering if you can uh, touch on those two things. If you would.
Yeah, absolutely. Through you, Chair. Um, the offsetting operational savings, we did quite a bit of work in detailing those it during the process reviews. So we were able to identify where there would be savings and efficiencies to be found. They were all delivered actually in a separate report um, to staff. So we didn't include them in this final presentation to council. Um, but staff do have much of that information already. Um, as for the shared services, again, that was also mentioned. Um, we believe, I personally believe very, very strongly in shared services, especially amongst government. We are all so very similar. A little bit unique, absolutely, but we deliver very many of the same services. So by partnering with others um, is probably the best way to achieve those operational savings. Um, so we did talk quite a bit with staff about shared services and how to go about it. And we were able to put them actually in touch with a number of other municipalities are doing just that.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Ms. Chase. Uh, through you, just one quick follow-up uh, comment, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, maybe it would be worth uh, worth council's time, uh, just at some point in the, in the near future to have maybe even a closed session to go over some of those operational savings. Um, and some of those offsetting costs that might be able to offset some of the investment that's required. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Russell. Um, next, I believe we have Counselor Timmers.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair McIllic. Uh, thank you to Susan for your presentation. Um, this is a massive undertaking and um, extremely timely. It's kind of been brought to the forefront, you know, the gaps and where we need some improvement. I know, um, I'm sorry, I missed part of your, your, your presentation because I was, I lost connectivity and I, I had to sign back in. But um, it's a struggle. So um, I did want to ask about the shared services and you've kind of answered that question, but I did have a, a question through to uh, Mr. Brown. Um, I heard you, you were a little choppy, but I heard you mention a committee and I was just curious about that committee and and who is sitting on the committee and do you have, are you outside of our municipality? With our, some of our community partners or you could just um, expand on that a little bit for me.
Yeah, through you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, the committee is formed of uh, members of the senior management team at this point. And um, it's set to prioritize IT's work to make sure that we're doing all we can to solve the problem. So they would be, they would be hearing from the frontline uh, residents of the community and funnel up any needs or wants to the committee who would discuss them and prioritize them amongst all of the um, current needs of the town.
Okay, thank you very much for that, uh.
If I could, Mr. Counsel, if I could, Mr. Chair, just to make a comment, Counselor, I think um, you know, I, I think what's important to highlight with that committee, it's not an external committee, as John mentioned, it really, one of the things we heard loud and clear from uh, Susan uh, in terms of her analysis was that uh, again, IT not, not was uh, didn't have a backseat, but IT wasn't necessarily on the forefront of all of the department heads when they were making decisions. And we needed to be much more focused on IT. So at times our senior leadership team will function as SMT to look at every particular issue. Uh, and on a monthly, bi-monthly um, basis, we'll meet to discuss very specific IT issues and almost like you see a, you know, at regional government when uh, the board of health functions as the board of health and it functions as council. And so um, it's really a, I, I think an approach to make sure that we're thinking, eating, breathing IT when we make um, decisions. And so I think that's, that's uh, hopefully that answers your question, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mike.
Okay.
That's it, that's it for me, Counselor, or Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Timmers. Um, next, I believe we have Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate the comments made by uh, Mr. Krikopoulos. Um, however, I'm hearkening um, over to uh, our colleague, um, uh, Counselor Russell. And uh, and I would like to, uh, I mean, this, this report, uh, I have been quite vocal in my commentary in terms of how long this report has taken to be produced. And COVID aside, uh, it is far too long to wait. Um, and one of the concerns that I have about this report, and now I'm convinced from the um, answer that Counselor Russell received is that I don't believe that there is any emphasis whatsoever on the fact that the council, A, is the body that's going to be supporting the um, investments here and two, the council is a customer. And so my question really is how you plan to report to council? Because if you see this as an internal committee and you start to operate so that you don't have to be accountable to council, you're going to have a lot of trouble getting investments. Furthermore, if there are problems with systems and they are facing council, then we are going to expect changes to take place. And we just have to look as, as close as the telephone system to understand that we can't make any progress at all on the problems with the telephone system as it relates to our constituents. So how do you plan to deal with cust, the council as a customer? And, and what can we rely on in terms of ongoing reporting? Because if you think that we're tone deaf on this, it's going to be because we are not involved. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, who you would suggest to answer that question.
I was, I was fearful you were going to have, hope for an answer from myself. Uh, I'm going to pass that to Mr. Kirk Krikopoulos.
So um, through you, Mr. Chair, so a couple of comments, I think, to council and, and I, I don't want to leave council with any thought uh, that you're not an integral part, uh, if not one of the most important parts of uh, the system uh, that we're looking at here. And so uh, if, if somehow in, in whatever answer uh, from any of the staff or consultant that that uh, has left you with that impression, uh, let me clarify that. And I also want to clarify a comment around the savings. Uh, and potential savings uh, and why they're not included in this particular element at this particular time. Uh, because there are some human resource elements to that, that we would be going in council, in camera with council to highlight. And oftentimes, when you look at a system that is where our system is, requires an opportunity to be built before you can find those efficiencies. And so um, again, those are parts of a conversation we want to have with council uh, in terms of the budget. But let me address your, your comment, Counselor, Mayor Easton with respect to council. Um, our goal uh, is and, and will be to continue to report through committee to council uh, on all issues relative uh, to both IT, digitization and, and where we move forward. Uh, again, I don't like the vernacular uh, that it's a, it's an internal committee, uh, because really it's just senior management team uh, that at times sits with its focus on IT. Uh, and that's really what it is. It's an internal committee of staff that simply looks at the IT needs and then we bring them to council via reports. So that council can then uh, make decisions, uh, validate emphases, uh, provide investment, understand what are some of the challenges moving forward. So I'm hoping that clarifies in some, in some fashion. Um, you know, what we mean by an internal committee, by no means were we intending, I think, to uh, to highlight that council is an important role or it doesn't play an important role uh, in the IT strategy. I think second, secondly, I'll go back to the comment around, uh, because I think it may have caused some confusion. Um, you know, in terms of the operational savings uh, and uh, and Susan can speak a little bit to this. Um, you know, reducing paper is one example. Uh, that'll lead to savings that will offset some of the increased costs, but we haven't done any of the analysis. Uh, at least not to my knowledge, um, as it relates specifically to where we save time on that, where we implement some of our uh, certain human resource systems uh, so that it frees up people's time so they can work on higher-end tasks. I mean, uh, you know, without, I think um, being negative about our current system, it is a very basic, basic system. Uh, we have uh, staffing complement right now that is just able to, I think, keep afloat. And that isn't reflective on staffing complement or the skills of the staff. It's simply reflective on the fact that those staff are busy doing a lot of the basic technical things. And so while we can go into camera and I can highlight the immense requirement from a staffing perspective. And I, Mayor Easton, you and I have had some of these conversations as I have with certain members of council. Um, those are things that need to be built and brought forward to council on an incremental basis, I would suggest, over the duration of the strategy, which is a multi-year strategy. And so if council wants to go in camera, I mean, we can absolutely come in camera at the next meeting. I don't have anything in front of me that highlights what those operational savings are. So Susan, uh, you know, I mean, you can resend me those or you can resend, or Terry can send me those. I think we can have those conversations. I don't think they were quantified in any, any real fashion and Susan's nodding saying, no. Uh, they were simply that if you invest in people, they can do strategic things. It'll free up time to find savings. So again, I think language is very important. I've often said that. I don't want to leave council with any notion that we're hiding any reports, that we haven't brought anything forward, that there's operational savings can be found. Because I think based on the slew of uh, messages I've just received, uh, that seems to be the impression people are left with. So if council wants to go into camera, I'm absolutely able to do that following this meeting or at another meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reassure um, council that my question was related in very general terms to a report that is probably, has the potential for being one of the most exciting decision points that we've had in, in the last, I don't know how many years. And I, I have to say that I read through the report more than once and I did not really see any evidence that council was involved. I'm not, and on the matter of the budget piece, that is totally separate. That is completely separate and I don't think for a moment that Mr. CAO would um, would not be bringing the information uh, to us at the appropriate time. However, council is not central to this document. And I just want to make the point that we have to be. And if that is the, if that's the belief, it's, if it's there and I'm not seeing it, that's good. That's a reassuring piece. Uh, but it, it certainly was not obvious to me. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I, I think what I'm hearing uh, from staff and from our CEO is that, you know, the term committee was used. But however, I think it was more of an internal working group amongst those uh, passionate or involved with this report. Um, am I correct in saying that? I, I think that they're respecting council and our, ultimately we have that decision. Uh, how? I, I don't know if it's council's job to necessarily know what we need. Um, you know, from a technical perspective, am I correct in saying that or thinking that, Mr. CEO, or?
Uh, through, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I mean, I think as it relates to that particular piece, I mean, you're absolutely you're absolutely correct. I think in uh, in, in, again, I'll, I'll reiterate, I don't think in any way it was intended not to include council. Council, uh, I think it was a stakeholder, as was senior leadership team. I would tell you uh, that I was part of those uh, those interviews that council uh, was a part of and sat through. Um, and so uh, and I was interviewed the same way. Uh, it's a report to move the municipality as a whole forward and how we function. Council is a part of governing, government and governance uh, and all the action items that will be brought there. So um, I think if we've missed, if we've missed the beat in terms of how the report was written, not to include council more. Uh, trying, I mean, definitely, you know, I'm open to that criticism. Uh, you know, on behalf of the team and, and we can figure out how we, how we get better. Um, but uh, council is everywhere in the report.
Okay, um, Mr. Nicky, I'm going to ask for your help. Who, who do we have next?
Chairman McIllic, Counselor Pachariva was next.
Okay, um, thank you for those comments, um, Mr. Kirk Krikopoulos. Um, go ahead, Counselor.
Thanks, Chairman McIllic, and, and through you, uh, maybe to Susan and to Mike. Um, you know, the, the, the process was a fulsome one you carried out and it's identified a bunch of a bunch of, I guess, missing pieces. So you know, um, solutions are not fully utilized, missing modules, uh, multiple solutions actually performing the same task. Uh, solutions not integrated. Uh, duplication of data due to multi-systems. So how is this all going to change going forward? Because in the past, as we ventured down the IT route, you know, we've been, we've been sold items that, that, you know, council has an appetite to pay for. Like, is this going to change going forward? Are we going to get the option to buy the Cadillac and then add the pieces to it? Because what we've got right now is a bunch of disjointed pieces that cost a heck of a lot of money that don't really integrate.
Um, with um, Mr. Would Mr. Chase like to take that question on?
Sure, yeah.
Pachariva?
Yeah. So through you, Chair, to the councillor. You're right with those observations. So what we've done is we've recommended some new processes for the decision making around new systems and new technologies. So definitely with more stringent, I guess, guidelines for buying, so making sure, for example, that solutions are looked at from the corporate level, not just from a department level, so that there is the opportunity for analysis to see if maybe we've got a different technology solution already in place that has that module. So rather than buying a whole new piece or a whole new product, we can add a piece. We're recommending that we do that review of the business process, do the analysis of the business first of all, to make sure that this is actually what we need, rather than seeing something, I'm not saying that this has happened here, but seeing something at a conference or seeing something at another municipality and thinking we must have it. So make sure that it's a fit for Lincoln before we go ahead and buy it. And this is part of this steering committee decision as well, making sure that the right solution is being bought for the corporation with that corporate perspective, again, as opposed to any other perspective. So making sure that the corporate priorities are to drive the systems that are being purchased or the new technologies that are being purchased.
Okay, that's terrific, because you know, councillor Russell and myself sit on the library board, and it's been quite frustrating over the past two years to see the lack of integration between the corporation and the library. The library's been kind of left to sit on its own, and and, you know, every chance we get, we remind the Cao that it's part of it, and you know, we're trying to get together, but if we're going to to throw away the silos and report under umbrella, then I'm in full support of it. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor Pachariva. Mr. Nicky, next, I believe we have councillor McPherson.
That's correct, Chair McIllic.
Okay, go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, just just a couple of comments. You know, it was a very interesting report to read, and I think really laid out our current state very nicely as to where we're at, and you know, previous previous speakers were talking about, you know, the the current level of staffing and you know, somewhat playing catch up on a regular basis and not having time for any kind of strategic planning, strategic look, you know, overall enterprise look, those types of things. And you know, I think that, you know, going back to experience in my work life, you know, investment in IT was always difficult. It was always challenging because, you know, we couldn't we couldn't quite see the future. We couldn't quite see what we were buying into. But when we got there, you know, everybody was ready to pat themselves on the back that, hey, that was a great investment, you know, we did this for the right reasons. So there certainly is a little bit of a leap of faith that I think we need to make when looking at investment in IT. And I hearken back to early days of the previous term and our focus on customer service and in a continuous improvement in customer service. And you know, I absolutely believe that if we are not investing in IT, we're short servicing ourselves or or not allowing ourselves to potentially realize some fairly, I would say, easy customer service improvements. So, you know, it's it is a bit of a bucket of cold water on us that, you know, this report is coming through, and, you know, we're seeing it, you know, right on in print, exactly where we're at and exactly what we have today and what we will continue to have if we stay the course. So I would I would absolutely support, you know, a strategic plan and investment tied to a strategic plan over the next three to five years. And, you know, make sure that there are benchmarks in that plan that will tie to efficiencies around the organization and and that we realize those efficiencies and that we are seeing the the cost containment that come as a result. But we're also seeing the improvements that we're making in all of the things that we're expecting out of a a high performing IT organization. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor McPherson. In reading that report, I'm just gonna ask Ms. Truwal, do we have a sort of a phased in approach similar to how councillor McPherson's the comments he's been making? Are we currently having that sort of phased in implementation plan with this report?
Through to you, Mr. Chair, that's what the plan is. The project prioritization that they developed is the phased in recommendation that we have. If we could foresee three years into the future, that's what we would do. However, as I mentioned, the business environment and also technology as well changes daily. Covid hit, nobody saw it coming. So we need to make sure that we're staying flexible, that we keep that prioritization matrix in mind as we're moving forward in order to adapt to changes. So what you're looking at is a three year plan, but it can't be set in stone because in a year, there might be brand new technologies, there may be some other big thing that hits us that we have to react to. And and we just have to be able to be flexible when it comes to innovation and technology.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, councillor McPherson?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, I just saw you had your hand up still. Mr. Kirkopolis, Mr. Cao, did you have any further comments? I see your hand is still up.
So through you, Mr. Chair, maybe just a few. I think, once again, to highlight for council that we didn't, you know, this isn't a deep dive on each and every solution, so it is about starting high and going deeper. I agree wholeheartedly with councillor McPherson's comments in terms of where we find ourselves. And I think, you know, this is about a culture change in the organization as well, and I think it does require a lot of buy in. And I know I've had that conversation with some members of council as well, as we've talked about this during the interview phases that you went through. So unless there is that type of buy in, then, you know, any sort of strategy will result in failure. So I think, you know, ensuring that we do have buy in, that this is a different way of thinking. And, you know, I think it's an important element. And again, I've just you know, I just wanted to highlight those for council and definitely open to going in camera to highlight any HR recommendations that were made by our consultant. And I just reviewed them again. They were all HR based negotiation or recommendations. There was nothing in there relative to operational efficiencies that could be gained. And so I'll let Ms. 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 Chase, you know, speak to that if she has anything else to highlight. But I know what I received was really around the state, the current state of the organization and some very specific human resource recommendations to me as the Cao. But should council want to go in camera, I'm definitely at your well, and we can do that at the next meeting.
Ms. Chase, did you have any further comments?
I think the only thing that I will comment through you, Chair, is that really the efficiencies that were identified was done during those deep dive process reviews that I mentioned on one of the slides. We did take a look at those particular processes and identified opportunities, gaps, and changes to be made. And that's definitely where there were savings to be identified. And, you know, they're they're part of the criteria that have been established. Other than that, as the Cao has said, most has been around HR considerations.
Okay, so I don't see any hands up. I'm just gonna make some comments with regards to it. So I think what we want to make sure is, and what I'm hearing is, I want, we want to make sure that there's a commitment from staff to embrace this sort of technology. To me, my thoughts is that there could be possible over investing if we're not careful. If staff is not on board, if staff and council, for that matter, is not on board. I compare it to, you know, my father, he might have an iPhone 10, but I think he still wishes he had a flip phone. So his technology isn't worth a whole lot. You know, it costs a lot, but he doesn't certainly need that sort of technology. So I want to make sure that we're not over investing in technology. I also have a concern for residents not adept to technology that they're not put at the back of the line because they, you know, were were not technologically savvy when making requests to staff or when contacting town hall. I still want to maintain that, you know, everyone's treated equally, whether you choose technology or whether you choose traditional methods of communication or, you know, yeah, communication. That would be another comment I would have. And then a final comment I would have is, you know, given the fact that we're, you know, talking shared services and that sort of thing, that whatever whatever platforms we choose or whatever systems we go with, that they're compatible with other municipalities, that we just don't decide to go with our own, choose our own sort of a plan, and then find out a year or two later that, well, you know, our neighboring municipalities are using different platforms. We're gonna have to reinvest in something totally new, or our senior or more elevated level of government, the region, they're using a certain type of, I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a specific sort of platform or you know, technology method that restricts us or limits us to possibly be sharing services with others. And those would be my comments that I would like to see moving forward, especially given the fact that, you know, we are going to be challenged budget wise in the next year or two, perhaps. So whatever we do invest in, we want to invest carefully. I think that some of us that have had kids move away from home, you know, we're going to appreciate our kids. We basically lost our IT department at home. I know I, you know, we've lost our IT department at home, and I'm always thankful that we have the IT department with the town of Lincoln, especially for this sort of thing. So anyways, there there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Reimer. Receive and file FN dash zero eight dash two zero Corporate Systems Master Plan. Endorse the conclusions and major recommendations in principle outlined in section six of appendix eight, a Corporate Systems Master Plan, and approve funding from the Technology Modernization Reserve Fund and building permit fees to upgrade and enhance the enterprise systems for planning, development, business, and municipal law enforcement as outlined in Corporate Systems Master Plan and in the financial section of this report. I will now ask their clerk to call the vote.
Thank you, Chair McIllic. Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Before we go to the vote, councillor Russell wants to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is just a quick, that was some motion. There's a lot packed in there, which I didn't realize was going to be so inclusive. Again, I've got concerns about the everything essentially from endorsement on with that motion. Again, I think that there's got, to me, before I would want to approve this, there has to be some kind of discussion about some shared services to see if there's any kind of savings that can be brought forward. Like, that's something that even through the governance review of last year was something that was keyed on. IT is something that we definitely can resource effectively with some shared services. So again, I'm greatly concerned that that's not mentioning this at all, and that we're already endorsing spending without even walking down that avenue. So if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Well, my 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 personal thoughts would be that it would come up in budget deliberations that the requests are made and we would have to approve those. But I'll allow Mr. Kirkopolis to answer that question.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the councillor. So a couple of comments. I think councillor McIllic is correct in so much as any future requests will come forward in future budget asks, councillor. You know, I think in this current budget ask, I anticipate, just looking at the state of things, that may not be the case. However, we're not there in the in that part of the budget process. So if and when we get to it, it will absolutely be brought forward, and council will have an opportunity to provide direction should you want those investments brought forward. What we've got here before you is really utilizing the modernization funding that we received from the province that has a very specific use to it and had been approved in the past by council to be used incrementally for items that would come from the Corporate Systems Master Plan Review. And so there is no budgetary impact. There's no budget ask right now as we head into 2021. And so I think anything that you're seeing here really is using that modernization funding dollars that have been set aside and the building permit fees. And I think, you know, to comments around shared services, I believe that, you know, I've tried with a few of my colleagues to be one of the ones that moves some of these items forward and thinks outside of the box on some of them. I just don't know the willingness by some of our, you know, collectively across the region to move any of these forward anytime in the foreseeable future. But definitely in council's hands to go back and continue to push my Cao colleagues around the table.
Councillor Russell?
Again, I thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm just, I don't know. And again, again, based on what Mr. Cao just said, and I have to take that at face value. But again, to me, there's always, I don't know, this doesn't say to me that we're using our resources as effectively as we can. I know that that money is set aside. It's not coming as a new budgetary expense, but it's still a spend. This does not say wholeheartedly that this is the most effective plan going forward. It's not like, to me, there should be like more of a business case format to it. I know it is a master plan, so I'm trying to to bring myself back that a lot of those asks in the future will be tied to budget. I get that. But again, to me, if we are allocating some spend at all, again, it's got to be, especially during the pandemic, it's got to be as effective as possible. And again, what I saw and what I just saw through that motion, again, there's a lot packed in there, and it just gives me some pause.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, maybe I'll let Ms. Dale or Mr. Bruder speak to. You'll see the the modernization dollars that are only specific to this particular item. You know, they can speak specifically to, so I guess council has one of two options. Receive the report as it is, and we remove that particular recommendation on the planning, development, building, and municipal law enforcement, enterprise system upgrade. Or again, I'll give Kathleen a chance to maybe speak to it, if she may be able to provide council some level of comfort. As can Mr. Adair, who's familiar with it.
Ms. Dale, would you like to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the tenant Lincoln initially started with the building permit process in a like a software for that several years ago. We implemented the the process for planning applications. We have no software in place at all for municipal law enforcement or licensing at all at this time. There are some other municipalities in the region. I know Grimsey, for example, uses the city view software for building permits. So there may be some opportunities if we're looking at upgrading this to also maybe work with some other municipalities to upgrade the software. Because what has happened is is the existing city view software is the current is, the current version is no longer being supported. They're going to more of a web-based format. So that's probably the main reason for that. I mean, this is one of the things that during the pandemic, we really, really had a lot of difficulty with because, you know, we had to find ways to accept items electronically, or people had to drop things off. We couldn't collect, there was no processes in place to collect application fees. People had to drop off application fees, mail them in, you know, call our administrative assistant to pay with their credit card. So I think really it was the, actually, the Covid pandemic that really put to light just how far behind we were with a lot of the technology that we currently have in planning and building.
Okay. Does that satisfy you, Counselor Russell?
It does with, as it pertains to building and to the permit situation. But again, I think it's just more of that global, holistic thing that I'm concerned about.
Well, I think what's gonna happen is, come budget time, we'll receive a number that's presented, and then we will discuss that number and either be good with it or see if we can trim it or see what we can do, where we can, you know, add or subtract if possible. I see Ms. Trualla wants to comment, go ahead.
And Mr. Adair.
Okay.
So I'll go first, so through you, Chair. Yes, so anything beyond this first step of the planning software, which is Perry Consulting Group's recommended first step to take us where we want to go, would come back to counsel as a capital project. And it would be outlining it as you see any other cap, large-scale project with this is what we want to do, and here is how much it's gonna cost. This is our business case for it. In terms of the actual planning software, CityView is the one that's used by all of the other local area municipalities. There's two primary ones that are used. One is used by the big guys, and that one's extremely expensive. The other one is used by more of the lower-tier, smaller municipalities. And CityView is the one that we already have. We just have an older version of it. All of the recommendations by Perry Consulting is that we start with the systems we already have, look to upgrade them to the newer models first so that we don't have to go through the whole transition of mapping and transitioning into completely new software. So first, investigate what we already have, and then look out to see what the other offerings are to make sure that it is still the right one. Just because it's what we picked in the past doesn't mean it's the best one in the future. So we'll do that due diligence. But in this case, for CityView, we have looked into it, and this is the first step. It's also the highest priority when we look, when we say endorse the recommendations. Those are more the high-level strategic visioning that has come out of talking to counsel and residents and staff, that everybody wants more integration between our various systems. Residents and counsel as well want that digital service delivery. In order to do that digital service delivery, we need, we need these systems in place. The new updated version of CityView is the only way that we can start offering digital service delivery for these planning and bylaw processes. It's also the only way to tie in our financial system so that we can take the online payments. So there was a lot of thought behind putting CityView first, and that's why Perry is making that recommendation. So that recommendation, that's why that recommendation, and then the endorse is more so endorsing that that's where you want to go, that counsel does want us to focus on the digital service delivery, on the integrated systems, on empowering our workforce with more technology. So it's not, the endorsement isn't that we're gonna follow that project prioritization. That's more for the IT Steering Committee that we were talking about to look at and to rearrange. Then we bring it back to counsel during the annual budget deliberations as a capital project so that you can tell us, yep, that's, that makes sense. That's the next step that we'll take. And then we go on from there, and we keep building. So I hope that answered it a little bit more.
Okay. Did Mr. Adair want to speak, Mr. CEO?
I think you did, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I see your hand is up, Madam Mayor, as well. Are you all right if I come to you after Mr. Adair speaks?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Adair.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair, to members of counsel. So just in light of Counselor Russell's comments regarding shared services, that is something that we have looked at and explored, I think, through the different review of each of the different business core enterprise systems that we're looking at. One that comes to mind, I know off the top of my head, is our GIS system, which is one of the recommendations in the report from the Perry Group, the master plan. So that is one that I know our regional partners at the Niagara region has extended offers to us to leverage the corporate system that will help us drive efficiencies with respect to sharing information between the two levels of government and also leverage some cost savings as well from a licensing perspective moving forward. Beyond that as well, part of, as Ms. Trualla was saying, looking at each of our different systems and different projects as have been outlined in the conclusions of the report, going out to market and looking at what our different systems are available out there, really looking at what the requirements are and fitting those, those different processes to the technology before we actually go ahead and do any upgrades or do any implementations is key to ensure that we don't necessarily overspend or underspend or incorrectly spend moving forward to make sure that our business processes are, I guess, centric to technology before we actually analyze and look at what business system could be or should be used before we move forward. So that's the only thing I would want to add there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Mayor, your turn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was quite encouraged by Ms. Trualla's comments. I thought that she really focused down on that Section 6 in the appendix. And so I think that if we use that as the guideline, what we're going to be doing is upgrading what we know to be common in other areas. What we know is really related to our base system in many ways. And we can make that easier transition to newer models. Still modest, but improving things as we go along. I also want to make a comment about shared services. And I think I've repeated this a couple of times, so I want to repeat it again. There is no readiness in the system for shared services. It's happening, it's happening very slowly, and it's happening because of one-on-one negotiations through people like our CIO. And so even though we repeat it over and over again, we all agree with shared services, yes, it should be happening. It's not simple by any stretch. And I believe that we do need to improve our system so that when we do go to someone, if the CIO went out tomorrow and had a discussion with somebody that he knows is leaning toward shared services and IT, well, I guess in the first place, Mr. Chairman, I hope he's going out to talk about cybersecurity. And that needs to happen on a regional basis. And then, when it comes to these operational matters, you're really out looking for people who have common interests. So there's no playbook for this, and we've just been told to start it. So we have to at least have something to offer. And we can now have a conversation and say, you know, we've done this study. We've got some pretty good information about where we need to go. We're going to make some modest improvements. What do you have in mind? And it really become, it's as grassroots as that. And so I think that we should reassure ourselves that the CIO is doing this on a very regular basis. And we will get there. But we also need to drag our system along with it so that we actually have something to offer, not a totally outdated system that really isn't going to do very much for anybody at the moment. So if we want to make overtures, we have to find common interests. But we also have to have something to offer. And I think that's what this, the support does. It gives us something to go to curry favor with other people. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. There was talk earlier about a possible in-camera meeting. I'll ask this to our CIO, about a possible in-camera meeting regarding staffing or savings. Is that something we want to do in the future? I'll direct back to Mr. Kerkopoulos.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, absolutely, I can come in camera and speak to that. Again, I just want to caution while we throw the word out, savings. I'd like to talk to you specifically about some human resource recommendations, but I think they're premature. However, but I'm at counsel's discretion. And if it gives counsel that level of confidence, I can come in camera at the next meeting on this particular issue.
Okay, so, okay. And should we approve this motion? It'll still, there's still going to be some discretion over the funding of this initiative. We all, we all can agree that there needs to be something happening. However, there's some concern about the funding or the amount of spend. That would be my thoughts. Okay, so I don't see any other hands up. Are we ready to vote on this motion? I've already read the motion. Are we ready, is everyone comfortable? Are we ready to vote on this motion? Counselor Russell?
Could you just read it one more time, Mr. Chair?
I can. Receive and file FN-08-20 Corporate Systems Master Plan. Endorse the conclusions and major recommendations in principle outlined in Section 6 of Appendix A, Corporate Systems Master Plan, and approve funding from the Technology Modernization Reserve Fund and building permit fees to upgrade and enhance the enterprise systems for planning, development, building, and municipal law enforcement as outlined in the Corporate Systems Master Plan and the financial section of this report. Looking at it myself to see. Hey.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe Counselor Timmers has her hand up.
Hey, Counselor Timmers.
I was just gonna just ask you to please call the vote.
Okay, I shall do that. I will now ask the clerk to call the vote.
Thank you, Chair McClellan. Please unmute your mic as I call out your name. Counselor Brené.
Yes.
Counselor McPherson. Counselor McPherson?
Support.
Thank you. Counselor McClellan?
Yes.
Counselor Pachariva?
Yes.
Counselor Reimer?
Yes.
Counselor Renjima?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Timmers?
Support.
Mayor Easton?
Support.
And that motion is carried.
Okay, we have now concluded the General Business and Finance Committee agenda. We will now rotate to allow Chair Renjima to assume the chair at this time for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda. However, before we do that, we've got a request for a break. It's over three hours here, so we're gonna take a break if possible. How long, five, 10 minutes? What? Any? You called 10, 10 sounds good. We'll break 10 minutes and see you shortly.
And Counselor Pachariva has his hand up.
9:26, so that'll bring us to 9:36.